I'd like to call the special meeting of Township of Ocean Planning Board to order, please. Could we have a roll call?
Here.
Dr. Di Benedetto.
Here.
Mr. De Figlia. Mr. Duffy. Mr. Good. Ms. Close.
Here.
Mr. Levy. Mr. Seattle.
Here.
Your wife's here.
Here.
Here. Salute to the flag, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Six. I thought I saw John. He's not...
The notice requirements of the open public meeting law for this meeting have been satisfied. A copy of the notice having been sent to the Esberry Park Press and the Coaster and filed in the office of the Township Clerk on February 20th, 2019. There are emergency exits through the auditorium doors and two exits at the rear of the building. There is a no smoking policy. Tonight, we will state that no new testimony will be taken after 10:00 PM. All meetings will be video and audio taped and shown on the Township of Ocean's Community Cable Channel, Channel 22 on Verizon FiOS, and Channel 77 on Cablevision. All cell phones must be turned off, or if you need to make a call, please make your call outside the meeting room. Number one on the list, Deal 35 Land LLC, Block 33, Lot 19.01, 1603 State Highway 35, Ocean Zone C-7. Ms. Krimko.
Good evening, Mr. Varelli, members of the board. As you know, Jennifer Krimko from Ansel Graham &amp; Aaron, on behalf of the applicant. Are we expecting Mr. De Figlia or Mr. Duffy tonight? I thought I saw Mr. Duffy walking in. Might have been an illusion on my part.
We all look alike.
Yeah, at this point, maybe. Okay, so as we left at the last hearing, as you know, we concluded our affirmative testimony with our traffic engineer. He did meet with Mr. Bay outside of the hearing. I understand it was a lengthy meeting, some three hours. I'll defer to Mike, to Ron, and to Bill. I understand a lot of his questions were answered. He did pull me aside before the hearing to indicate that he still had some more questions and wanted more clarification. He explained that Mr. De Saria, while I wasn't putting him up for testimony today, will be here. Hopefully, they can talk about it and Dan can give him what he needs in order to satisfy him. I further understand by speaking with Jackie before the hearing that the neighbors who were going to bring a traffic expert, he was not available today, but she does plan on bringing him on June 24th because that was the regular hearing date, as was announced at the last meeting. That's outside, obviously, the normal process. It would normally be at the end, but as I told Jackie, the applicant has no objection to allowing them to present their traffic engineer out of order, so to speak, and not wait until the end in order to do it. So, and I would just stipulate that if their traffic engineer can't be here on the 24th, then obviously, any public, it would have to be during the public portion once we close. At that point, we've extended the two courtesies for the two meetings at this point.
I'll agree with that, so I just want to make it clear, Jackie, that your expert must appear on June 24th, 2019. If they fail to appear, then I'm going to require that they appear after the applicant's case has been concluded. So just that you understand that. So you will be first at that point.
And just for the record, Mr. Duffy is here. I knew I saw you, John, and I announced it, but nobody believed me. Okay, so with that, what I plan to do tonight is start with our licensed tree expert, Zig Panic. I'll introduce him and go through his qualifications while... Oh, and here's Mr. De Figlia.
Now the party can start. For the record, I am signing the...
Thank you. And what I'd like... Oh. Okay, and what I'd like to do, and I just want to make sure I didn't do it already, is move Mr. Panic's curriculum vitae into evidence because it is impressive and I imagine that the neighbors will be interested to understand his qualifications. It doesn't appear that I did already. Excuse me. So I'd like to move in as A65. The resume of W. Zig Panic. And I'll give a copy. I don't have copies for everybody. I did give a copy to someone in the public and obviously, that can be passed around, but I will go through it for the record. And just so the board understands, we recognize that the past practice of this board is to no longer grant waivers for tree replacement and/or payment into the tree fund. As you know, historically, the last 20 years, it had always been that when there was an extraordinary amount of trees, in lieu of identifying each and every one of them, it was generally understood that 15 trees per acre would sustain. But we recognize that that is no longer the board's practice, and I want to just say upfront that we plan on complying fully with the tree ordinance. I'm going to have Zig kind of talk a little bit about it and what we're doing and what we will submit as any condition of approval. So what I'd like to do is introduce Zig, have him sworn, and we're going to go through his qualifications.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the testimony you're about to give is the truth and the whole truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
You could have a seat, Zig.
My name is Zig Panic.
And Zig, you are a state licensed tree expert, is that correct?
That is correct.
Why don't you take a few moments and just share the benefit of your qualifications, both education as well as work experience that allowed you to earn that license?
I practice in both New Jersey and New York State. I'm a member of the International Society of Arborists. I'm also a member of the New Jersey Shea Tree Federation. I'm a former Assistant Superintendent of Shea Trees for the County of Monmouth. And my duties were mostly hazard tree identification, tree mapping and removal, besides, you know, supervising crews. I was also the former certified tree expert for the County of Monmouth for their park system and all the golf courses. I was also a park manager for Huber and Hartshorn Woods, which covered about 1,200 acres. And I oversaw all the aspects of park operations in open space. I was also a former licensed tree expert for the Township of Howell. I was a former manager for the Arboretum and Grounds at the New York Botanical Gardens. I'm a degreed landscape architect, a degreed horticulturist and turf specialist. I'm also a licensed certified pesticide applicator for 3A, 3B, which specializes in the health and control of woody ornamentals, herbaceous plant, invasive weeds and vines.
And over the past few decades, your certified tree reports have been accepted by the municipality and relied upon both at hearings and you've testified as well as for tree removal permits.
In a number of planning and zoning boards in townships throughout Monmouth County, Ocean and Middlesex Counties as well.
We would submit him as an expert unless the board has any questions.
No, we will accept that. Thank you, sir.
Okay, so Zig, we had submitted into evidence the initial tree report that you did, and I just want to get the date because there's so many... Hmm, I know that we moved it in. Do you have, Amy, do you have when we moved in the tree report? The woodlot appraisal? It should be. Yes. Okay, so... Okay. So then we... Okay, so we didn't move it in yet. No, I know you have. We submitted it initially. And so just for the record, Mr. Levy has joined the dais. Hi, Mr. Levy. So it's A65. This is the tree report, woodlot appraisal. It was submitted, it was dated January 2019 by Zig Panic, licensed tree expert number 364. This has been on file.
I thought A65 was CV.
You're right, A66. I apologize. And that was submitted and has been on file. And what we did, we prepared a PowerPoint which basically provides a summary of what we just moved in as A66, from which Zig is going to testify to. So Zig, before you jump into your report, if you could take a few moments and just explain to the board when you started this study and what it entailed.
What I did is I looked at this and analyzed the site a year, a little over a year ago. And from my perspective, it was very important to look at it for the whole year, from the time the leaves emerged and started to mature till the summer, when it's under stress or, and usually when stress comes, especially in a natural site like it is, it's not irrigated, nobody was maintaining it. So there's different stresses, insects, diseases, invasives, and in some cases hurricanes or floods. So it was important for me to look at it from the time the leaves emerged, they became mature, then I looked at it in a summer when it was under stress. I looked at it again in the fall and through the winter. And then the winter, I was able to basically look at the trees without the leaves and it gave me a whole lot more information. And from that, we developed three study plots. And I'm going to go into the PowerPoint. But the three study plots on the site and one study plot for specimen trees. So I'm going to discuss that in...
Don't need to do this, Zig?
Yeah. Will we take some of these lights down in the back? First of all, what's called the Level 2 Study, I mean, there's Level 1, 2, and 3. Level 2 Study is when I actually, instead of driving by the tree, I actually look at the tree. I'm looking at it for the species, I'm looking at it for the health. I want to know the age and I want to know any kind of a value it has, you know, and mostly that's what people are asking me, is this tree worth keeping? And for one reason or another, you know, I'll put it in the study.
All right, and let me just ask you a quick question, Zig. When you say worth keeping, there's from an arborist standpoint or a tree expert standpoint, and then there's the municipal ordinance where there's the difference between a live tree or a dead and dying tree, a viable tree versus dead or dying. So there's different standards. You looked at it both as an arborist and as well as the borough's ordinance, the town's ordinance.
Besides that, I also want to look at those trees as far as invasive species go. For example, we have Tree of Heaven, which I'll discuss what's happened. That's really pretty much invaded this property. And Tree of Heaven is an invasive species. It's not a very good tree. And these trees have verticulum and then they have ambrosia beetles. They're short-lived. I wouldn't even call it a pioneer species. A pioneer species, which we'll also discuss on this lot, are trees that are the first ones to come in and establish a site, but they're also the first trees to die. So they hold a place. But anyways, so that's what this Level 2 Study does. Can you go to the next one? This historical aerial shows that this 32-acre site, if you could zero in on the 32 acres, just kind of frame it out.
I don't know how.
Yeah, here.
No, he's doing it right here.
Yeah. What it was, it shows that it was a farm. And where you look at the vegetation from the aerial view, there was a road that ran down the middle and it had an allay of trees. The property owner planted trees on both sides to cover the road. And in the back area, you'll see it's vegetated. That's the wetlands that's still here today. It's actually gotten a little bit bigger. And over to the left, the bottom left side is where the homestead was and you could see some of the trees which today are specimen trees. Go to the next one. This site shows, I can't see it too well in there, but it shows where the... There are a little bit too many lights on there. The three study blocks. On the bottom left, one, and then on the top towards the wetlands.
Wait, do you have...
I have the pointer. I could point it better. You have one study block there, you have a second one, and you have a third one right in there. And those are what, those were established a year ago. And they were 100 by 100, which is about a quarter of an acre.
Mr. Panic, could you just repeat that, please? Because somebody passed by as you were pointing. I couldn't see.
Yeah, those study blocks, the three study blocks are... And the reason they were picked in a particular area is just to show a little diversity. We have one that was closer to the wetlands, one that's a little closer to Deal Road and the homestead, and the third one, which was a lot closer to the library that sits there today. And they were 100 by 100, which is about a quarter of an acre. And what I try to show is the diversity in those three spots, as opposed to having them close by.
Okay, and what'd you find?
What I found, hang on one second. I'm just going to go through these sites if I could, and then I could talk about those. Go to the next slide?
Yeah, you have it. It's the right arrow.
Okay. It's not working. The northwest quadrant, while we're looking at that, other than the study blocks that's in the top-left corner, there is mostly trees that are under six inches. And we also have calorie pears, which are a horrible invasive today. I even see them now growing in wetland areas and detention basins. And they're really taking over. And it was planted as a really pretty ornamental tree, but it's also one that was short-lived and just got out of control as an invasive. Can you go over to the next? Now, Study Block 1, what I, just to answer your question, what we had in there is most of the trees in that group, when I studied them, and we're going to take a look at how many were there in the block. There were 46 trees in that 100 by 100 block, which averages 187 trees in an acre. And of that, the majority of those trees were the Atlantis, the Tree of Heaven. That's the invasive tree. And the other thing about it is, when those trees are cut down, if you cut one down, you'll get about five or 10 or 20 or 30 more trees. They are active sprouters and they're very hard to control. Normally, in any kind of a site, when we want to control them, we do a herbicide to control them and you really want to eradicate them. Can you go up to the next one? And Study Block 2, that's the area, if you remember in the aerial, that showed the trees going down the middle of the road, the allay. Well, after 49 years, a lot more of those maples, and those are basically maple trees growing there, they populated that site. So that was the most dense site as far as trees go. And mostly what you had in there were the maples and some sweetgums started to take hold in there as well. You go to the next site? In Study Block 3, I looked at 44 trees in that 100 by 100 area. And in an acre, there were 176 trees. And in Study Block 3, you had a lot more of those pioneer species. And again, just to remind the board, and I'm doing this very quick, but pioneer species is a tree that's a quick grower, that's a short-lived tree. It's not a terrible tree, but it's a tree that takes the space for the next succession of trees that are more sustainable. So these trees come and they go very quickly. And that's what you had in there, are black cherry trees and black locust trees. And the black cherry trees, they don't really produce cherries like we know them. They produce a lot of seeds. It's, again, a good pioneer species tree. But when you go through that forest, you'll see, like, the webs, those are web worms and tent caterpillars that'll invade them. Also has plum knot disease that really hastens their demise. And basically, what you had in that tree inventory were those trees. Go over to the next one. Now, the specimen trees, those are pretty interesting. Now, those, I think most people that live here see those trees. They drive by Deal Road, they look at them. All the trees are old and doesn't mean that they're great, but there are some good ones. They have not been taken care of. Like, by the library, there's beech trees there. They have bleeding canker. There's three trees growing together. One of the trees is dead. And what it's doing, it's passing its sicknesses to the other two trees that are hanging in there. So those specimen trees, and if you look through the specimen trees as I did, they all have some sort of a problem. Either there's cavities through hurricanes and neglect, leaders have been broken. They do have a lot of situations. Some of them, and I'm recommending they can be corrected. The ones that can be corrected, I've recommended corrections for them, which are pruning, some fungicides, some fertilization, that can be brought back and preserved. Other ones, there is no hope for them. They're also going through senescis, old age, just like us. You know, we only have a certain time that we can survive and trees are no different. Can we go over to the next slide? This just shows one of the specimen trees. I mean, the slide because of the light. It shows only the branches coming to the left. The leader right in the center was probably, the last couple of hurricanes probably did it in. It just ripped out the whole entire leader of that tree. There is no saving that tree and you wouldn't want to. It really needs to be cut down. Now, the next one. Now, that one shows those beeches on the left, the three. One is, the one in the center is completely dead. The one over to the right, I could probably preserve that tree through fungicide treatments, but it does have bleeding canker in it. And the beech trees are really the oldest ones we have here on the site. But they do have some problems. Again, there's nobody here to maintain those trees.
But those, along the property line with the library, those are in the buffer area and they can be saved. Is that correct?
They can be worked on.
Right.
Some can be saved.
Attempted to save. They're not proposed to be taken down necessarily as part of this settlement.
They're not being proposed to taken down. And in my study, I proposed some treatments for them. But good aggressive pruning, fertilization, and like I said, fungicide can preserve those trees.
Okay, so this was basically an overview of what's out there. And I'm going to let you speak about it a little more generally, but we're actually taking a second step, which caused a lot of to-do among the township residents because there were numbers on just about every large tree on the property. So we did the plots first, correct?
Correct.
And now we're undertaking where you are physically, your team, you and your team and the Mazer Consulting surveyors are going to physically identify and plot on a survey every single tree on the property that is six inches or greater. Is that correct?
That is correct, and we've been working on it for months now. And I personally have looked at over 2,500 trees and we still have a few left to look at.
And the purpose for doing that is you're going to identify each tree as you would for every other tree report that you do for the town for tree removal permit. You're going to identify the tree species and identify if it's viable or if it's dead or dying. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so we're going to have a full inventory of every single qualifying tree on the property. So it would be very easy for the township to make a calculation as to the number of viable trees that are being taken down and what our obligation would be vis-a-vis replanting on-site and/or making a payment into the tree fund.
That's correct, and we're actively doing that. And I'll have a detailed report. I've submitted a number of reports to the township for much smaller amounts of trees. This is a huge project and the report is very large. What I've done is I have a quick summation, tree inventory, which I don't know if you can all see it from there, but you have copies of my initial report.
And that's what we moved in as A66. Within that, in each plot, you identify exactly, I said, the tree number, its location, the species, and its condition.
Correct. And also because of the number of trees, I've gone to three different colors. I've gone to white from 1 to 1,000 in white because there's no room to put 1,001, 1,560, so on and so forth. So I went from white to yellow to red.
Okay, and we will be submitting that report for purposes of calculating what our obligation would be.
That is correct.
Okay, now with regard to the planting on-site, there was, I think it was at the first hearing, if not the first, the second, members of the public had questioned the types of trees that were chosen for the landscaping in the buffer. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And since then, you had an opportunity to review all of the plans and meet with the tree experts at Mazer and the engineers.
And the landscape architect.
And make recommendations as to different types of trees and locations that might do better.
Correct, because I had the good fortune of actually walking every bit of that property where the landscape architects and a lot of the engineers. And even to walk through it today, I mean, between, I mean, the biggest problem is ticks and then poison ivy and other maladies that you come across when you walk through the forest. But I was able to make better recommendations. And what I mean by better recommendations, number one, Deal and Ocean Township have a tremendous herd of deer and they're not being hunted. They only control our cars. Cars kill them. They also hurt people when that happens. But there's no hunting, they have no predators. So what that means to us in the environment, and also with my park experience, we've seen that the deer will completely decimate the understory of anything that's edible. They'll now go to private properties when they take, I mean, even when you look at the amount of what's here, they'll eat that plus they'll go to the neighbors' properties and also eat that. But so...
That took into consideration what you're proposing to plant on-site?
Correct, so I want deer-resistant plants.
Okay, and you made those recommendations and as part of any resubmission, those will be reflecting on the resubmission?
It will.
Okay. So basically, generally speaking, what's the condition of this site? If you were called, if this property was the township open space and you were called to come in and be the conservator of these trees and re-establish them, are these, majority of the trees, are they worth saving? What would you recommend, even if there was no project? Are there trees that would need to come down regardless?
Well, when I first looked at it, it was in a very declining state. A year later, it's worse. And part of the problem is you have those pioneer species which are at their near end. You have those invasive species, the Tree of Heaven, which are of no value to anyone for any reason, not even for lumber. And you have those invasive vines that are just beyond control at this point. So this is an area where I would consider starting from new and redeveloping it. And I would also look at the possibility with the invasives of taking some of that area and disposing of it properly.
Any questions for Mr. Panic from the board?
I have a question. So you were asked, like, what percentage do you think is not...
It's a high percentage and I really can't give you that number until I do all my final analysis, which will be a little while. And I don't want to give a number right at this point. It wouldn't be a fair thing to do.
So when you went to Section 2, you said the maples, so the maples are good.
Well, when I looked at them a year ago, they were viable. They looked pretty good. Now, on my return visit, and I'm looking at them individually, they have ambrosia beetles. You'll see if you examine each of the trees, they have little black spots. Those are the beetle boers that are going through there right now. And they will eventually destroy the trees. So most of those trees are now afflicted with it.
So I have a few questions. So of the 32 acres, you decided to pull three plots. What made you decide those three specific spots?
Well, but before you answer, just so you're aware, in tech review, Mr. Fitzgerald discussed how many plots and the size of the plots and the location. So I just want you to understand it was based on the direction.
I'm just trying to get a basis for his analysis.
What I'm looking at, after I walked the site, I want to try to get as much diversity as I can. So I picked one that was close to Deal Road, not too close to the homestead. I picked one, as we just mentioned, where the tree allay was and the high density of trees are. And then I went a little bit closer to the library area where you had, again, a little more diversity.
So the picture, the old picture showed where the wetlands is, like, looks like that's the... like, looks like that's the greatest amount of vegetation. Is that correct?
That is correct.
How come we didn't pick a plot there?
Well, because for one, we can't, we can't get in and do anything to the wetlands. They're untouchable.
Okay, so that area is intact, in your opinion?
Well, I did look at it, but it wasn't part of the study, but I did because I knew some questions would come out. There are a lot of trees that are falling down and then they're being replaced, but that is the most natural area. Because it is wet, the invasives, as far as the weeds and vines are controlled, they don't like wet feet.
So, and you said it's larger now, correct?
It's in better shape. It's a little bit larger than it was from the historical map, yes. Because you have that stream that goes through it and it's overflowed a couple of times since-
We're not encroaching on that at all?
No, not at all.
We're not touching that. And that's also, Dr. Meneno, one of the reasons why it wasn't included in the study, because we're not touching it.
Do you have a, another picture, the one that you showed in the study shows the jug handle. Can you show us the new configuration?
We will show that on our resubmission. We don't have, we don't have that as part of this, but I-
Okay. So today he's just testifying that, what?
Today he's testifying as to the quality of the types of trees, the quality of trees, that he's going to be submitting a detailed report as to the number of viable trees that will be removed for purposes of making-
But we don't have that report yet?
No, you don't.
And when will we have that report?
It's almost completed. It's just the data is a huge amount of, like I said, it's almost 3,000 trees and it's detailed for each tree.
The report really, historically, is submitted to Jim because the trees are coming down. That's part of the application that's shown on all of the plans. So the question becomes, what is the replacement requirement? That's the purpose of the report.
I, I hear what you're saying. I would like to know what the report says. I mean, it's hard to have a real judgment onto what's going on with the trees without having the report.
Well, the ju, when you say a judgment, the tree, as shown on the plans, the trees, except for the several trees that are recommended to be saved, the trees are proposed to come down.
I'm not, I'm not objecting to that. I'm not saying that-
I did submit the original report and that gives you an overview from the three study blocks.
Do we have, can we see that original report?
It was submitted back in January.
That's wonderful. Can we see it now while we're having a discussion with the tree expert?
And will there be a listing of what trees that you're recommending to plant?
Yes, yes. I'm already working on that list.
It's not gonna come, it's not gonna come in the form of a list from Mr. Panic. It will be the trees that are proposed on the plan itself. We're submitting revised plans that will have been revised pursuant to his recommendations.
And when, when do you see that?
Well, we didn't submit the revised plans because we were asked not to, to wait until the neighbors' traffic expert testified to make sure that there weren't any additional changes. So we held off resubmitting them.
See, it's a little bit difficult, Jennifer, just from my perspective. Understanding everything you said, I can't imagine the shape of those trees, but knowing the new layout that you're showing us that you're gonna be building, it would be nice to know what trees are being, going to be planted at this time versus at a later date. You know what I mean? We're talking trees now.
No, 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 understood, but if you remember a couple of things. First, we expected that the traffic expert was gonna be here tonight. So we had hoped that we would have it all done by then. That's number one. Because we were asked not to submit it until then. But number two, again, we're not asking for a vote tonight and we're not asking you, the purpose of Zig being here is with regard to tree removal, not with regard to tree replacement. At the end of the day, our engineer is the one who's going to present the plan for what we're proposing to landscape in consultation with Zig. So Zig has testified, he's met with their landscape architects, he's met with their engineers, but ultimately, the project engineer will be presenting the landscaping. Now Zig has been to every single meeting. He will be here if there's a specific question as to the landscaping being presented, but his testimony tonight, today is not for the board to analyze the landscaping that isn't in front of them. Today is to understand the study that was submitted to you, that we moved in as a 66, as well as to understand the undertaking that was engaged in thus far, the additional undertaking and study that will be, that will be undertaken, and then to understand that the applicant recognizes their responsibility to comply with the ordinance.
Is there, is there a section that is being, that is being scoped for removal that you feel has a density of healthy trees? Is there a section that currently exists?
I, the quick answer is no. There isn't a healthy spot in that whole area except the wetlands. That's the only place that I could, I could point to that is viable and it's doing well and it's doing what it's supposed to.
So there may be a smattering of trees within each section. You're not suggesting that there are no viable trees, but in answer to Mr. Weinstein-
There's not a, there's not a-
There's no grouping of them.
There's not an eighth of an acre that looks like.
Yeah, well, technically, what I'm gonna look at are trees that are dead and dying, but there's a lot of trees that are not dead and dying. They're just not very nice trees. So I can't say they're dead or dying just because they're not very nice trees. So they're gonna be a viable tree.
Right, so even if they're not a tree that you would want to save per se or an invasive, an invasive spirit, species, we would still be required to either replace them or pay into the tree fund.
That is correct.
So the only trees you're gonna identify that are not worth saving are the dead or dying ones.
That's correct. Dead dying or, I mean, there are some trees that are leaning very bad and being pulled by roots and by, I'm saying by invasive vines, literally pulling them down. And you can see the trees, roots of the trees on one side of it. The tree will not survive.
What are those vines? Because I did walk the property.
There's Bittersweet uwanimus is the main one. That's the, that's the really thick one. There is some wisteria there, but Bittersweet uwanimus, it's oriental bittersweet uwanimus technically. And it is, is a horrible thing.
Is that like wisteria where you could chop it, but it grows on the ground and-
No, no, wisteria, wisteria, if it touches the ground, you'll have another one. You'll have many, many more. But bittersweet isn't, doesn't grow like that. But it just continues to spread and it grows outward and completely chokes the tree. Some of the photographs I'll show you there, the report you're reading shows trees completely covered by them.
I've seen two, three inch thick.
Yeah, exactly. And no tree is gonna survive that. They just get covered. And then the leaves can produce photosynthesis, which is the life of the tree, and the tree just won't make it.
So are you saying, are you saying in like, if we fast forward three years and nothing ever happened to this area, that it's just gonna be all-
It'll be all invasive vines. It'll be Tree of Heaven. Those are the ones that will make it through this.
And there'll be no healthy trees?
There'll be no healthy trees. That's my opinion.
But there still will be trees.
There will always be trees, yes.
They just won't be healthy trees.
Yeah, they won't be healthy trees.
I mean, so mostly these trees are older trees, correct? There are no new growth going on in this site?
There's, that's a very good question and that's one of the things I look for. There's very, very little undergrowth and part of that is the fact that there are no, the only thing that you see that's new are the Tree of Heaven, which suckers. And it does throw a lot of seeds, but mostly what I see are trees that sucker. Some of the younger trees, if they come up, they'd be eaten by deer anyways. And usually I look for oaks because deer love them and usually, we have very few oaks there except near the homestead. Growing out in the field, I, very, very few oaks.
And what types of trees did the deer like to eat?
Number one is, is oaks. They love oaks. They love yews, which is an evergreen. Anything, anything with leaves on it that, you'll even see them get on their hind feet and it almost looks like you took a hedge trimmer. And you could see the whole forest line, just a straight line. It's what the deer can reach when they just get on their hind feet.
So how, how are we gonna combat this with the deer and planting new trees on the site?
Well, first of all, we want deer resistancy, so that's what we have to do. I actually had that challenge when I was a park manager and unfortunately for, fortunately, unfortunately, there was no control. We even tried salt licks with birth control. It did not work. The only, it was, we tried every way. And I did, I did what they called exposures. I took one, one plot 100 by 100 and I fenced it in and just let the foliage grow, just to show what, what can happen if the deer aren't there. That was completely vegetated in a couple of months. All the way outside the fence was completely bare. So what we're looking for are deer-resistant plants. Deer, when they're hungry, they'll eat almost anything, but we will get deer-resistant plants, which are my number one thing. But you look around here, you'll see a lot of boxwoods because deer don't like boxwoods. All through Ocean and Deal, they grow everywhere. Almost everything else is eaten by deer.
So you're recommending those to be put into the new?
I have, I have a whole list of plants that I've, I've been in this area for over 40 years working and I've dealt with deer. And I'm gonna say I have deer-resistant plants. Some years, deer won't touch them. Other years, they'll eat some. Like mountain laurels, for example, you can drive around. It's an understory plant as well. And they do quite well. Rhododendron maximums do quite well. If that's on the list.
So can I ask you about the specimen trees? Are you going to, well, you did say you're gonna remove all trees or?
No, no, no. I said except for the ones that his report indicates should be saved.
Okay, so like tree number 23, it's a European beech. Okay, I see it on a-
Which page, you know, Mr. Veroli?
Is there a page on it?
Oh no, there isn't. That would have been too busy.
It's near the end. It's near the back. Maybe 30 pages in, I don't know, but it looks like it is tree. So it's probably a specimen tree, I would suspect.
What I would tell you is, is that was looked at a year ago. And like I said, nothing's been done to those trees and the beech, the beech trees on-site do have bleeding canker. It depends on how fast it's progressed and to what stage. So I can't, yeah, I-
It looks like it's on the edge. I mean, we can take a look at the site plan. That may be one of the ones that is not being-
What is that, near Deal Road, Route 35, that particular tree?
But I would, again, I'm gonna say I'm gonna revisit those trees. A year later, a lot can happen. So I really can't make an honest comment about it right now without looking at it again. And I am looking at it again as part of my study that we're gonna hand into the town.
And what we're going to also submit is a survey identifying all of these trees. It'll be clear exactly where they are.
Right.
And we'll let Jeremy do an overlay that shows the development. So you'll know clearly which ones are being proposed to be kept.
I think the takeaway from my perspective, because I spent most of my life working in forests and natural areas, you can walk into a natural area and you know it's beautiful, it's viable, it's healthy, and there's, there's lots of it around this area. When you walk there, you could see the devastation that's there. And it really is, it's out of control. That's a real summation of it. And what's there are invasive trees, some pioneer species. At the northern quadrant, you have sweet gums and calorie pears and really not very good calorie pears. If I saw them, I'd want to get rid of them right away.
I think that you're, I think Jim, Bill, I mean, Jim, you don't let us plant those, do you, the pear trees?
No, not anymore. Just for clarification, I think what I'm hearing from you tonight is that you're not seeking a waiver from the tree replacement requirement.
Correct. So, you know, there isn't a whole lot more to discuss with regard to trees because whatever's there and viable, we will either replace or pay a fee for, because that's what the ordinance requires us to do.
Just for my own edification, the aerial maps you have in here are dated 1980. Do you know about when they stopped?
It was really 1970. I think that was an error.
Okay, so regardless, do you know when they stopped farming actively and that started to go back to reforest?
Well, what I can tell you is I'm aging most of these trees. That's part of what I'm doing. So there's, the oldest trees are really near the homestead and by the library. Everything else, I mean, again, being pioneer species, you're not seeing things that are more than 25 years old. There's a few dotted here and there that are older, but they're far and few between. So you're looking at a, at a series of, like succession of pioneer species that came in, died, nothing took its place but another pioneer species tree. That's what we're looking at.
Just out of curiosity, by the way, I understand. I'm just, I'm just trying to get something in my head. What would have been, so three, so fast forward three years from now and all the trees are in no good shape, what would have been the issue that the town would have faced with that?
Well, if the town owns the property, and this is the liability factor, someone, like if you look, again, I'm gonna tell you from my experiences in open space and a county parks person, we are very careful in purchasing property because once you have public property, it's open to the public. They're using taxpayer funds. So you're required to make some sort of access for people. So if you have an access road, for example, or a bench, and you have a hazardous tree that could fall on somebody when they're walking through, the town is liable for it. And part of what I do in townships is I try to protect them from liability. So I do a certified plan and what it does, it gives a cap of $200,000. So if someone is hurt or killed, I mean, we're looking at a cap of $200,000. But I have to do the certification for the town. And basically, what I'm doing is if there's a path or a bench, I'm going down the path and I'm looking at the trees that could possibly fall on a jogger or a walker. Or if a bench is near a tree that's got a cavity or hollowed out, the bench either has to be moved to another spot or you have to take the tree out. So, yeah, there is a liability. If it's public, if it's public area, someone comes out there and gets hurt, the town's responsible for that.
Is there a greater liability that, that the, whatever infestation of this area would spread beyond it or?
No, unless it was bamboo, which can go on someone else's property, kudzu, which we have now in Monmouth County, that can go on someone's property. Somebody brought it in from the south and thought they were doing us a favor and we now have kudzu. And that's even worse. If you ever go down south, you'll see it completely covered, everything. But yeah, the liability stays within that plot.
Okay.
Any other questions from board members? Jim, do you have anything to add?
My one question is, are they seeking a waiver? And I said, no.
But do you, do you agree with his assessment?
What, his assessment? When I see it, I will look at it.
Okay.
Okay. I, it's, I don't have it yet, so I can't say whether I agree or disagree.
But you saw his report.
I saw that report, yeah, but we're looking at an assessment of the entire-
Right, right, correct. But basically, you agreed with the-
I agree with what's in the report, yes.
So Jim, you have not made a report at this time, but you will?
Yes.
Okay. So now that we have that clarified, are you done with this witness?
We am subject to questions from the public.
So I'd like to open this session up to questions from the public regarding this witness's testimony. Dennis?
Please come to the microphone. If you'd like to touch the microphone.
Dennis, could you give your name and address again, please?
Dennis Howell, 1638 Olive Street. And I have a question that might be a little improper for this witness, but I've been at, I've been at the town hall a number of times and there's two studies there. There's Mr. Panic's study. There's also Mr. de Blasio's study, which I had been looking at until I found out that there was a second study.
When you say Mr. de Blasio's study, do you mean the-
The survey?
Right, as part of them, and this was moved into evidence and testified to by Jeremy at the first or second hearing. Before Zig undertook, the landscape architect or the tree expert at Mazer Consulting additionally did his initial study to identify trees and put it on a survey. So there was that initial one and then Zig came and did this more substantial study. And now we're going to step three to the study identifying every tree on the property.
Okay, that makes sense. I just didn't know which came first. And I was looking at the de Blasio. The chicken did, okay. Under what authority did he have that in there?
Listen, I have, I have chickens. And I have goats, a donkey, and a horse. So as a farmer, I can tell you, it's a chicken.
Okay. Actually, the two studies are very similar. I got a little bit confused on some of the, on, I don't know if there's a standard for grading trees, but Mr. de Blasio, de Blasio was grading certain trees as either good or fair and Mr. Panic graded them a different way. And I don't know which one takes precedent. Is there a standard for that?
I can't vouch for another certified or licensed expert. I mean, I looked at it a year ago. I'm looking at it today. I don't believe Mr. de Blasio gave it as much scrutiny as I have.
Okay.
But I think the question is the vernacular.
Right.
Yeah, so he's saying he called it fair. You called, you might have called it something else.
No, there are different, I mean, there are, there's like not a set standard. There are some definitions that we stay- There are some definitions that we stay with, but other ones, I mean, I make my own. I try to make it so people can identify it, you know?
Like, like I said, they were very similar. There are a couple differences in them, but nothing really substantial. The one thing that surprised me, there was a specimen tree. You, you seem to have a vendetta, probably a, a good vendetta against the Tree of Heaven.
I do, I, I despise them.
Okay. And there is, unless I read it incorrectly, one of the specimen trees is a Tree of Heaven.
Correct. And, and the reason it's a specimen, and again, when you're looking at trees, to identify a specimen, even though it's a tree I don't like, I still have to identify it. It's just like I said before, just because I don't like a tree, I can't say it's dead or dying.
Okay. But this one was marked as a save. I think it was tree, it was in one of the bases.
Well, I, I mean, that was someone else's opinion, Mr. de Blasio's probably. My opinion is, I would not save it.
Okay.
Even though it's a specimen, I would tell you to get rid of it.
Okay.
It'll come to haunt you. And your neighbors, by the way. Talk about, that's one of the things that are also invasive to neighbors. Very prolific cedar, and they go all over.
Okay. The deer resistant plants that you're, you're gonna suggest, are they all native plants?
No. Native, native plants are good, but there's an awful lot of natives that aren't. Now, the reason I'm telling you that is because the non-native plants are developed to be deer resistant. So the native plants are food for deer. So you're really giving them food, you're giving them a buffet. So we, we don't wanna do that. So I, I have a nice palette of plants, so I wanna try to use what is gonna benefit this town long-term.
I understand.
Because we wanna go fifty years from now, I wanna still see plants we put in today.
The only objection might be is that the native plants are, whether they'll attract the, the bugs and the, the things that birds like to eat, and more so than the non-native plants.
Very correct, but we will use as many native plants as I can. And, but the, the non-native plants are also, I mean, they're, they're also, I can tell you, a whole list of plants that attract butterflies, insects, birds, et cetera. And that's, that's part of my concern as an environmentalist and as a, as a parks guy, that's my, always been my thing. I need nesting areas, I want things with berries, I want things with flowers, I don't want sterile plants.
Okay, so that'll be as part of your landscape plan coming forward?
That's a big part of it.
Awesome, okay. I'm trying to establish a baseline in my head. There's, there were thirty-nine specimen trees.
Well, thirty-nine, thirty-nine is just a number that we picked. There might be a couple of more, but in that particular area.
Right. Actually, what, what's the state tree of New Jersey? Is it red oak?
It's an oak, red oak.
Red oak? One of the, one of the trees in, in one of your plots was a red oak, and that was also not a specimen tree, and it was not marked to be saved. Was it just because it was in developer's way?
We'll put another red oaks. I mean, if it's in the way of whatever, again, when we make the assessment, we're gonna, we'll use other oaks to replace it with, which are, which will be healthy and more viable.
Okay. So, in my mind, to establish sort of a baseline, there was a, a number of thirty-seven hundred trees of a diameter greater than six inches to come down.
That, that number, after I'm looking at it, you know, physically, is, I think it's not as many, that thirty-seven hundred was an estimate.
Okay.
So it may not be correct.
Well, you extrapolated that from the three plots already.
Yeah, right.
And that makes sense, and I think the numbers made sense. One of the things is, the, the other, are the trees that provide certain benefits, even though they're not of the, the six-inch diameter size, size. They do maintain water, they go through evapotransport.
Sure.
All that sort of stuff. Is that, has there been a study of the number of trees that are gonna come down in general, and how much water evaporation we will be losing?
Well, what's gonna happen if you have an unhealthy tree? We're not getting much benefits from an unhealthy tree. So when you're looking at a area that is not so good, it isn't really a benefit to the environment or the community. What I'm suggesting is, we're gonna put in trees that will be a benefit, and what we can put on that site will be put somewhere else in Ocean Township.
Okay.
So it will benefit us.
Do you have an idea of how long the, the site will be essentially barren? How, how long?
Well, it won't be barren for long, for, we don't want erosion, we don't want, I mean, there's a lot of reasons you don't want it barren, so. And we will, we will revegetate it when the weather is proper and the season's proper.
Okay. So just as, as sort of a baseline, let's take the thirty-seven hundred trees and whatever other trees and forbs come down. The only trees that exist right now that might be saved are the nineteen or so out of the thirty-nine identified specimen trees?
Not necessarily. First of all, you have all the wetlands in the back that will act as a buffer. We will continue to have a buffer where, along where the library is, and we will add to that buffer. Because the trees, again, which I just discussed, that are not viable and not really well, we're gonna replace them in the buffer with just not any old tree, we're gonna...
Right, I understand that. I'm talking about the trees that exist now. The ones that are gonna survive this are twenty or so trees of the specimen trees. Everything else is gonna go. Except for the wetlands, of course.
And I can't give you an honest question, because I looked at those trees a year ago, I'm looking at them again, because a lot happens in one year.
I'm sure they did go better.
If a tree is sick, or it's invaded by insects, it declines quite rapidly, you'd be surprised.
So it might even be fewer trees?
It might even be fewer.
Okay.
But we're gonna do the best that we can to preserve, whatever we can.
Okay, and are you, you're gonna be involved in this?
I'm involved in it, I've been asked by the owner to be involved in it.
Did you participate in the original environmental impact study?
In here, no. I, I've done many of them, but I haven't done it in Ocean Township.
Okay, was, was Mr. de Blasio part of that originally?
I can't answer that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hallid. The lady, the blonde lady spoke before, she'd like to...
Well, she's coming up, I have a follow-up question for Mr. Panic, just to clarify. There was some discussion about non-native species, and very often, there's concerns that non-native species are invasive. And I'm assuming that the ones that you're going to select won't be invasive.
That is very correct.
Yes, okay.
Okay, could you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Linda Reinman. I live at six oh four Dow Avenue in Oakhurst.
Could you just spell your last name, Ms. Reinman?
R-E-I-N-M-A-N. All right, there were two points. One, if they're going to have deer resistant trees, what are the deer gonna eat?
Does it, I mean, why do we have to have, first of all, what I'm saying is, they're deer resistant, doesn't mean they won't eat them. So they'll still have food. We just, we, we wanna put plants that are gonna help the community. If we're gonna be taking down a number of plants, we need to replace them with, with things that are gonna benefit the community. So deer resistancy means I'll have plants that have leaves and are viable, and they're gonna hold water, et cetera. So it's a benefit.
Well, when you're speaking of the community, you're only speaking of people, not animals.
Well, there's too many deer here, they have to be controlled. The population's out of, out of control.
So they won't be able to eat the, the new plants? So they'll eat more of the neighbor's plants?
I can't tell you what deer are gonna eat, they'll eat whatever they want.
Okay. I'm also, well, I don't know, I have a neighbor who's from Luxembourg.
Should we have her sworn in, just in case? It sounds like...
Yeah, do you, we really just need questions now, not comments at this point.
Questions regarding Mr. Panic's testimony.
Okay.
And you're, you're sort of giving your opinion or going down that road, I'm not sure.
Okay. All right, this neighbor who, who lives in Luxembourg, who lived in Luxembourg many years ago, they used to feed the deer in her town, so that they wouldn't invade.
I have to object, Mr. Chair.
I know.
There's only a question, at the end of the, the application, then we can take comments. But right now, we just need...
So if you have any questions regarding Mr. Panic's direct testimony, we'd be happy to listen, but other than that, we can't entertain.
Well, there was the question about whether, when you're referring to the community, you're only referring to people.
Oh, animals as well.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's why I'm, I'm looking at plants that are gonna attract birds, bees, butterflies. Deer will fit in the, in that whole project, too. I just want lot less, I need plants on the site.
Well, you know, we, we've been living here for over...
I have to, I have to object again, it's, that's not a question.
Okay.
I sustain.
All right, well, I'm trying to think of a question. Also, I'm, I had a neighbor who was on the tree planting committee. I know, I know.
We can't do this.
I wonder where the tree, I know he planted an oak tree on the environmental commission. I wonder if that's the tree that we were talking about, the red oak?
I can't answer that question.
Okay.
But you're welcome to come back at the end and give your opinion at that point. Thank you. Anyone else from the general public have any questions for this individual? Olga, would you, again, just not to be redundant, but I'm gonna ask you to state your name and address, because it's been a while.
And, and I don't mean to be redundant again, but I'm going in the same line of the neighbor. When you're talking about that the native plants are food for the deer, and you are going to basically add deer resistant, is there any buffer between the commercial property and the, the new development that is proposed? Is it gonna be any buffer with the food for deer, so that they will not be running into traffic trying to cross either to Deal or to Highway Thirty-five? Because we see, eh...
I can't say too much about the deer where they're gonna go, but they have the wetlands, and I can comment on the trees, I can't say too much more about the deer. But they do have the wetlands, it's gonna be eight acres, and they're gonna, they'll have plenty of forage there.
But between the development and the open acres or the wetlands, it's gonna be a section, like to create a buffer, or some sort of like a natural fence, so that they will stay, whatever species they are going to be, while this process of the construction is, and all the trees are being taken, is going to be a certain buffer to keep them going to the field.
There is a buffer that won't be touched during construction, yes, there will be, and the wetlands will be untouched, and the deer will go there. Plus, they have Joe Palaya Park, which they go to right now. I drive by there, there's lots of deer there.
There is. So it's going to be a certain precaution being taken while all this...
I have to object, Mr. Chair, he can't speak as to construction practices. He can, he's testifying as to the trees.
Okay. With, I think it follows into his category, because he's trying to create...
There is gonna be a buffer, just to answer, yes, there is a buffer. You know, I can't say it any other way, there is a buffer that will be preserved, the wetlands will be preserved, they won't be touched, and that, I hope answers your question.
And is there any way that you can create a wider buffer with this food for deer, or whatever species you feel like they are more attractive?
It would seem that that would be more of a question for the architects later, right?
Well, no.
The layout, when you're, when you're asking questions about the layout.
Again, the, the site layout and the buffer was testified to at three hearings, I think, maybe four, at this point, by the site engineer.
Right.
We are revising the plan, which will slightly change some of the landscape areas based on the urban jug handle. But again, Mr. Panic is testifying to the health of the trees that exist there today, and his input to the engineer. When the plan arrives, if Ms. Hanu doesn't feel that it's adequate, she can ask questions of the engineer at that time, or make comments during the public portion.
No, I'm not talking about the engineer or the architectural. I'm talking about the expert in trees and vegetation, I believe that is his...
Yeah, I believe I answered the question.
So, can, is there any way that you can, you can widen that? Because right now, without any...
Again, Olga, again, that would be a question to be answered, as Ms. Krimko stated. It's not up to this gentleman here to make that decision.
So by the architect you're talking about?
No, the architect is gonna...
No, the engineer.
The architect is going to speak as to the buildings.
Buildings. Correct. So right now, that he is here, we, we wanna address to him our concern that, at the moment, with all these trees that they are, and all the vegetation, we have constant years coming into traffic and accidents created. So once the, eh, taking of the trees start, is going to be a certain buffer planted, so that they stay behind.
I can answer, he wouldn't know that. The, the answer is, our development is going to create a buffer for the final project as required by the ordinance. We are not planning any temporary or permanent buffers for purposes of deer control. No.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Jackie Winsell, six-ten Deal Road. So, you look familiar. Were you one of the people spraying the trees?
I was on site.
I think we met, maybe.
We might've.
I, I was asking about the trees. You said they were being sprayed, painted with something that would wash off.
There was, they were identified with numbers.
Right.
That...
Yeah, you were doing it the day.
They're not permanent, those numbers are not permanent, by the way.
Yeah, that's what you had said. So, the tree, I mean, isn't it just nature that trees die and come down, and then certain bugs inhabit those trees, and other trees are grown? Like, that's just Mother Nature, right? I mean, it's not like we have a, a plight on that corner, you're saying, a lot of the...
Sure, that, that is Mother Nature, except that, on this particular site, it's, it's gotten out of control, because you have invasives that have taken over, and are literally destroying that site.
So if this land were to be acquired by, say, Green Acres or some other groups which have shown interest, would your company be able to go in and correct the situation? Say we wanted to keep as many trees as possible, is there a way to remediate that situation?
It's, it's beyond control at this point. The answer is no.
So you, if, even if we could keep this as open space, your recommendation would be to take every tree down?
Clear it and put new trees in.
That's what you do.
Yeah, and get rid of the invasive. So you'd have to leave it fallow for a while, and, and really remediate the invasives, so it doesn't come back and give you the same problem.
So, in terms of the math, is it the township's policy in the, in the shade tree commission, that if it's a diseased tree, they don't have to pay?
Well, that's a question for Jim, that's not a question for my tree expert, as to the township policy.
Repeat that again?
If the arborist, Mr. Panic, states that it's a diseased tree, not worth keeping, and it comes down, do they, does the developer owe us money or not?
I can actually read from the ordinance, if that would be helpful for you.
Okay.
The ordinance states under section nine dash two point four, trees that are dead, severely damaged by natural causes or accident to the point that the natural habit of the tree cannot be restored as determined by a New Jersey certified tree expert or competent public authority, director of community development, township engineer, et cetera. Trees that are severely diseased and require removal as certified by a New Jersey certified tree expert, or trees that pose an imminent public safety hazard as determined by a New Jersey certified tree expert or competent public, competent public authority, such as the police, director of community development, township engineer, et cetera. And just to clear up, certified tree expert is no longer what you're called now, it's a licensed tree expert, but that's the same thing, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So they won't owe us any money then? That's, that's the answer. If, if everything except thirty-nine, no, nineteen trees, there's only nineteen healthy trees there?
That isn't what he testified to.
I have seen the report. But I would not say they don't owe us any money, I would say they don't have to replace the trees.
So would it's...
It's not about money, it's about replacing viable trees.
But just Jackie, to clarify, his testimony was with regard to those trees that he was going to try and save, was that number of about thirty-nine or nineteen or whatever was that number of about thirty-nine or nineteen or whatever number he threw out, not those which are viable. He read from just now, and, and maybe you missed it, but when he just offered his testimony, he had indicated, for example, um, just let me give you an example, in going back to what you had up there, in a study block one, you had indicated that uh Zig, there was, and this is just taken from the report that was submitted, it's been on file for six months now, um, that for the acreage, there were forty-six trees in the study block. So that equates to a hundred and eighty-seven total trees, of that hundred and eighty-seven total trees, twenty-one were sound or stable, is that correct?
That's correct.
So that's about eleven percent.
Okay, so did we, would Mr. Panic consider taking a tour with, say, another tree expert? Cause I feel like, you know, not everybody's opinion's the same, same thing with doctors, people get a second opinion. Would our township be open to someone walking with Mr. Panic and evaluating on our behalf as a community? Are they truly, because there's a benefit to the developer that they're, they're all diseased and they come down, I'm exaggerating a little bit, sorry.
I have, I have to object, when you listen to the qualifications of Mr. Panic, it's clear that, and to listen to him talk, it's very clear that he has a great love of trees and the environment and would not encourage removing a tree for the benefit to, to call a tree dead or dying for the benefit of a developer, so I object to that inference. And again, the ordinance requires us to present a certified tree expert, now a licensed tree expert, there is no one more qualified in New Jersey as we believe than Mr. Panic, which is why we brought him, recognizing that the neighbors ran for council on a platform of saving the trees here in this particular plot. So again, if the neighbors would like to hire a tree expert to counter Mr. Panic, then great, but our obligation is to submit what we've submitted thus far and what we intend to submit.
Well, from the original thirty-seven trees that were coming down, it was somehow estimated roughly, don't hold me to the number, like a million dollars, that it would be owed for all the trees.
That's not, number one, that's not correct, number two, I, I don't know what she's speaking of, the report that was submitted gave an estimate as to the number of trees total and the dead and dying have not yet been identified.
Mr. Panic has testified to that and said he's going to render a report in the near future.
Yeah, well, the, what I had seen was something like thirty-seven hundred and fifty trees.
Well, you may have seen it, but I'm going to say that Mr. Panic will be rendering a future report, and until that time, I think you, your question is not relevant. Not until the time you see his final numbers.
Which, which question is not relevant, sorry.
Whatever question you just asked, didn't you, didn't you just ask a particular question, I don't wanna argue with you.
No, you're just saying, I asked a couple of questions, I'm not sure what, when you're, you're
The last question.
About the money that's due?
Pardon me?
About how many trees?
No, you were talking to him about a particular number of trees.
Thirty-seven hundred and fifty.
They're not able to put an exact number on it now, and he explained that if I back up thirty minutes
No, I said roughly, I wasn't keeping a make that to that.
So they cannot answer your question right now, if you would be patient enough to wait for him to render his report, you can come back and ask him at that time.
And let me just clarify again, the number thirty-seven hundred was an estimate of the number of qualifying trees based on an extrapolation of the three sample plots, it was in no way the number of trees on site that were viable.
I thought it was the spray painted trees, the total.
No, he, yes.
That was an inventory that was taken.
Again, he's speaking about the total number of trees, he hasn't offered testimony yet as to the number that are viable versus the number that are dead, diseased, or dying.
Okay, then I just have one last question, would you be able to schedule a walkthrough with some of the neighbors that do have environmental concerns and show us what your findings are?
No, the, anything that happens is gonna happen in front of the board.
Even if we paid him, if he's the best and we want to have him walk us through?
Again, we're gonna have a report identifying every single tree that is out there.
On paper, I mean, you can say anything on paper, anyway, I hope that a town, the township
You can't pay him for his work.
Because that would be a conflict, Jackie.
Okay, so we have to then hire somebody, I just think that for us to all sit here now that
Hire an independent person, Jackie, that's it, you have to hire an independent person, you can't hire him, he's already hired.
So would the township hire it, is what I was asking, we can't afford to keep hiring
What are you asking me for, I don't work for the township.
Would the township hire someone to, to walk with the residents who are, have great environmental concerns about this area being clear cut and just landscaped? So we feel protected for the border from flooding and just in terms of
Okay, okay, Jim, hey Jim, is, is there any, is there any kind of level of due diligence you do based on the report that he gives you, is there any? Is there something that you do to, to validate?
As far as whether the board wants to direct, the, the, wants to hire a separate consultant, that's, that's a decision of the board, but then the money to do that would have to come from somewhere. And whether the applicant would be willing to pay for another consultant when he's already hired
Probably not.
No, 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 no.
And whether the township
That's not what I was asking.
Taken out of their pocket, not into the governing body to
Mate, that's, I, I think your questions are, your questions are better posed to the town council, quite frankly, and you know it, you just ran for it.
No, I mean, I'm told to ask, I, I'm asking him if he would give us a tour based on what his findings are. When he's hired by the developer, he has reason, when the developer has an easier place to build without trees, he's more inclined to find the problems, if we wanna save the trees, he'll find a solution, there's two ways to look at something.
You wanna defend your certification here, by all means.
Not his certification, it's about fixing a problem.
I take offense to that, only because I may, I'm a licensed expert
I agree.
And I'm making an honest evaluation of it, I'm being paid by the developer, but I'm not being paid by the developer to find trees that are sick and dying that aren't. Like I said, I'm making an honest assessment, that's my license, and I've been doing this for over forty years.
I appreciate that, but I'm saying if you, if your job was to save the trees, they could be saved.
Uh, my assessment is that, and, and I've made testimony as to the condition of these trees and if they can or can't be saved.
Okay, that's all for now.
Well, guys, 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 do we have one conversation please?
You gotta be on the record.
So my question was, by the way, so um I don't think this is to take offense to you, by the way, I think it's just, um, I think that there's a, I'm, I'm wondering what the checks and balances are against, like, when he makes his report and how that, and how we, we get that report and digest it. Do you do anything to validate what he's done, not to the, not at every single tree level, but be able to
I would look at the report, I would look at the site, I am not a certified tree expert, I have nowhere near Mr. Panic's qualifications, but at the same time, I do have a degree in landscape architecture, I worked my way through college working for a tree service, so I have a pretty good knowledge of, you know, trees and when, whether a tree is sick or a tree is not sick, I would double check, I'm not gonna look at every tree.
I understand, so you're gonna do, so you're, you're gonna do some due diligence on, on my behalf?
Yes, I would do it, I would check just to make sure.
Okay, because we're gonna be looking to you to basically tell us, does this look accurate?
That's, that's correct.
And Jim, in the past, in, at, over the past twenty years, as long as I've been practicing, there have been instances with properties where you've disagreed with the trees that were coming down, and you and Bill have said, that's a healthy tree, work around it, don't take that down, or
That's true, that's true.
On single-family residential where there are not as many trees, so to speak, and the report is much shorter, there have been instances where you've offered opinions about the trees.
Right, I mean, I
And, and the, the other thing is, just, just so the board understands that the tree replacement requirement in a zoning ordinance is a waiver, a design waiver, it's, it's not a variance, and it was done that way deliberately when the ordinance was prepared because design waivers do not require the same level of commitment or, or I don't know what the word is you wanna say, but, but the same levels of proofs, magnitudes of proofs for the board to waive them, that's why they're called waivers.
But we're not asking for a waiver.
But they're not asking for the waiver, but it was done intentionally so that the board could have flexibility in that area. That's why for years the board would, if there was an inordinate and a number of trees coming down, they would say, okay, you need to replace if you put fifteen per acre plus whatever you're actually replacing on your plan.
And I think the board needs to understand that if, if the developer wanted to, outside the scope of this board, under your tree removal ordinance, could file for a permit to remove those trees tomorrow, or at least when Zig was done with his report. And it would be submitted in the natural course, it wouldn't be in the public, it wouldn't be on notice to anybody, they could have gone in, submitted the report, and gone in, got the bulldozers, and carefully went and removed the trees without any review by this board or anybody else, but they chose not, recognizing that trees were important to this board and that trees are important to the neighbors, we're not doing that, we're taking the extra step, we're going through the process, we're giving the board and the public the benefit to see what's being done, so they have the opportunity to review it. But again, under your ordinance, we are entitled to get a permit based on a certified, I'm sorry, a licensed tree expert report to remove those trees outside the scope of this hearing.
Actually, just, just to add to that, because there are two separate ordinances, the one that Jennifer's referring to is much less restrictive. The zoning ordinance says the tree, if the tree is six inches or greater in caliper, one foot above the root crown, it has to be counted and looked at. Other ordinance, which is not part of the zoning, says if the tree is nine inches or greater in caliper breast height, that would translate to probably ten to eleven inches in caliper, one inch, foot above the root crown, they could go out and cut them down.
No, but in, but we couldn't because the way the ordinance is written, we, you couldn't go in and clear cut unless it was for construction. We can't do construction unless it's approved by a board, so the only trees under the tree ordinance, the zoning ordinance, is with regard to dead, diseased, or dying, so again, we're extending the courtesy of bringing this to the public, allowing the public to understand the level of study that went into this and, and what we're doing, but the ordinance is very clear. We're in, the dead, the, the dead, diseased, or dying trees can be removed without review of this board.
You're saying that you're not eh, uh, looking for a waiver?
Correct.
But you're also saying that you wanna add money to the shade tree?
That's not a waiver, that the ordinance allows that specifically.
Would you stipulate to planting only trees?
No, we can't, we don't have room on the site to do that.
How about in another site?
We ta- we actually talked about that, Mr. Di Benedetto, as you know, we, I'm sorry, Dr. Di Benedetto, I, I've only made that mistake once. And if I ever have it too thick, I wanna make sure I don't make it again, um
Correct.
So we actually talked about that, and, and the issue would be because the open s- deal test site, for example, would be perfect, why not plant them there, and we could, the problem is because you don't have irrigation, we couldn't plant them in the su- and, and I'll let, I'll let Zig talk about, we couldn't plant them at two and a half, they won't live. And even without the irrigation, I'm sorry, even if we planted them smaller at an inch and a half, they, he can't guarantee them for a year because there's no irrigation there, so we could, but the town would need to dip into their shade tree fund and get some irrigation before we start planting trees there.
Just to give you a practical eh example of that, about five years ago, the township received a donation of a number of shade trees from Princeton Nurseries when Princeton Nurseries was closing down and planted them throughout Joe Playa Park. And many of those trees died because there was no way to water them, the township actually had a truck that went around with, that had a big tank on it that went around and watered them, and that truck kept breaking down, and many of those trees died, they just didn't survive.
One of the things that I talked to Ron about was, I know that everyone's saying you have all this money and no one's spending it, maybe irrigation in public areas.
Isn't, isn't there a stream in Joe Playa Park?
Not, not in the areas where they were planting the trees.
Well, I'm, but I, I asked the question, isn't there a stream there?
You'd have to tackle well and put in irrigation.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, we're talking like, this is not like rocket science here.
No, no.
It's not rocket science at all, it would be a cost, we don't know the cost, this was a meeting today.
Okay.
But we're eh eh recognizing that we can't
So if we found a solution to the irrigation, you would do that?
It's the same amount, it's whether we're paying it or planting, it's the same amount of money, it doesn't, the, the three fifty is
It's, there is a difference.
No, 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 I'm saying to us, I, I know the difference to you.
That there, there is a difference, the trees are being planted.
Correct.
Not money going into an account.
Understood.
That, who knows what happens to that money?
And, and again, as long as we're not, well, I don't
I don't know what happens to that money.
A- as long as the dev-
I don't either.
To answer your question, Dr. Di Benedetto, as long as the developer wouldn't be required to guarantee those trees, then yes, we could plant them.
Okay, there you go.
Can I go?
Yes.
Ray Pogwist from thirteen oh eight Bonna Ave, let me correct
I just missed your name again.
Go ahead, Ray Pogwist, thirteen oh eight Bonna Ave.
Could you just spell that?
P S N Peter, O G W I S T, um, I, I got here late, so I didn't catch your name.
Zig Panic.
Zimpen, okay, um, we were just talking about irrigation, um, now, I don't know if anyone else knows, but there are such things as irrigation bags that can be put up against a tree?
Correct.
That could also be worked with, right?
Except someone's gotta fill them.
No problem.
They gotta be filled on a regular basis and, and just, as Jim just testified, they had a water truck that went around to fill those type of bags, and the truck always broke down.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm familiar with that, I also, from the, let, let me address the water bag issue, there are uh, that, I don't think it's that intensive, um, there are other people out there that have worked with them.
Is this a question, Mr. Pogwist?
What's that?
This has to be a question.
Okay, i- is it that intensive to have water bags that, I mean, the labor, is it that labor intensive to fill labor? Or water bags that will probably have to only be filled every once, twice, or every two weeks?
That's not, that's not true.
Really?
Yeah.
Other, other, I've seen other towns do it, have you seen other towns do that?
I've been involved in it myself.
Okay.
It doesn't last two weeks.
Okay.
No.
All right, well, I'll, 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 I'll pass on it, the other issue was at uh Joe Playa Park, uh, the trees that were planted. It wasn't an issue of planting, it wasn't an issue of water, it was an issue of planting the trees correctly. I was involved in that, I was involved with Princeton Nursery, I was the in-between, I was the go-between. Go ahead, all right.
Yeah, no, we're just looking for questions
Sure.
On his report, do you have any questions about the, the testimony that uh, that Mr. Panic gave?
Sure, so I, I saw the preliminary report on that, and your count, like you said, you did three plots of a hundred by a hundred, and you did counts of the trees by a hundred foot by a hundred foot, and you extrapolated that to the larger site. I believe you put uh as a number, two hundred and four trees per acre, or two hundred and, yeah, it was extrapolated to two hundred and four trees per acre, is that correct?
Roughly.
Roughly, no, but you did put that number down on the paperwork.
I have to look at the report, it's been awhile.
Do you guys, now, I'm, I'm a little confused because that
What's the question?
The, the question is, uh, that was a preliminary report, do you have a secondary report?
Yes, I'm going to, I've been through the site, I'm looking at every single tree now.
Okay.
Other than what's in the study block, I've gone beyond it, I'm looking at every tree on the site.
Okay, cause yeah, the number, as Jackie said, I think comes at the thirty-five hundred, or thirty-six hundred trees?
That was a guesstimate.
Okay, I
Again, Mr. Mr. Panic, this was asked and answered, testified that he's individually counting every tree. They are being numbered individually and they be, and they'll be placed on a survey.
I know that, yeah, and I thank you for doing that, you were, I think you were one of the first people to ever really do a true count.
Is there a question, Mr. Chair?
So, I thank
Believe me, it's a daunting task, you have no idea.
So, so very good, um, I mean, I've looked at a lot of site plans over the years, over ten years when I was chair of the Environmental Commission, and I believe yours was the first one to really do an authentic study on that, thank you. When you do your walkthrough, do, are you have, do you have any um issues with us bringing in another certified tree expert to verify what you're seeing?
I can't answer that question, but I, I have nothing to hide.
Does the board, if I brought someone in independently who is a certified tree expert to walk together and to verify? And then also come in front of the board possibly and testify?
That would be a little bit unusual, Mr. Panic, but what, what the experts could do is certainly take Mr. Panic's report and go out and be like, read, verify whether he agrees or not.
But he can walk hand, he can walk with
Well, I, I
And, and, and basically, you have two experts seeing the same thing at the same time.
A lot of this, okay, let's, that, uh, first of all, a lot of this has already been done. We are not going to backtrack and spend three months now with Mr. Pogwist's expert and redo what's already been done, number one. Number two, our obligation is to submit a tree, licensed tree expert report, we are going to do that. If Mr. Pogwist or Ms. Wenzel or anyone in the public wants to hire their own expert to challenge the veracity or the findings in that report, they have the right to do so.
I'm just looking for consistency, tell you the truth, I, I basically, when you send your, submit your report, you'll have numbers on the trees of which you're subject, subjecting it to?
And it will be on a survey.
Okay, so is there any issue with me bringing a certified tree expert onto that property to verify?
I, I suppose that if it's a licensed person and they have insurance and they've named the owner
The owner should, the owner should be something
No, there'll have to be an agreement, correct.
Yeah, with the owner.
Okay.
There'd have to be an agreement.
And I realize, sir, there, there's only a handful of certified tree experts in, in the state.
Correct.
There're like three, four hundred maybe, or about that?
Uh, there's less.
Yeah, so you, you guys are very rare, you're rarer than any other expert or any other profession in the state, I would say.
Fair question.
So, I realize that, um, so I guess
Do you know how to get in touch with me if you wanna hire an expert to get access to the site, what the owner would require?
Right, right.
I can give you my card.
Okay, thank you, um, when do you expect to do this?
I'm, I'm working on it, I'm actively working on it right now, I'm, I'm close to the end.
Okay, so this parcel of land is adjacent to Playa Park. You're saying that about eighty-nine percent, is that correct, is about diseased or
I can't answer that question right now till the report is done.
I just read from study block one.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's an initial report done a year ago.
Okay, cause what concerns me is that if it's adjacent to one of our parks that is also forested, that those numbers can, can be extrapolated to that area also, is that true possibly?
It is true, and uh, I, I haven't done a report on Joe Playa Park, but I've been through there numerous times, and you have your own problems there.
Okay, so then the town has a larger issue at hand possibly?
Not really, I mean, most of it is turf now, so a lot of the trees, but you'll see a lot of the areas with invasive vines on those trees and the wetland, you have your own problems, let me put it that way.
Yeah, I'm talking about the forest area, uh not not the turf, not the.
Again, I haven't studied that area, so I can't really comment on it.
Well, the other point is that the, most of the area of the subject site is farmland thirty years ago, and has evolved naturally or unnaturally, however you wanna put it, in the last thirty years, and Joe Playa Park has been there for fifty, sixty, maybe a hundred years.
Oh, it used to be a test site, right?
You're comparing apples to oranges.
But you have trees that have grown there since it was a test site, and you have forested areas.
This is not, this this application is not about.
But it's not about Playa Park. It's just about whatever he, that m- Mister Panic testified to.
Okay.
It's not about other things you like around the town or or anything like that. Or about what might happen in the future, uh when the final site plan is. He he can only testify to the trees.
I'm sorry, I'm I'm trying, I'm trying to shed light on a bigger picture. Bigger picture, trees, the benefits of trees. Are you familiar with the um interception of rainfall hitting a tree, that term?
Of course I am.
Okay, now, what what percent of rainfall hits a tree that doesn't hit the ground? Can you tell me that?
Well, I really don't wanna comment on that, rather just comment, uh I can't get into the biology of it, I'd really rather discuss my report.
From what I've read and what I've studied, something like about.
I have to object.
This is not regarding his testimony, right?
Reporting his report.
Okay. Um can I tell you, can I ask you, uh do you know about transit- trans evaporation?
I most certainly know about all of biology of trees, and my major is in biology and science.
Is it true that a a mature tree can possibly take up about forty thousand gallons a year?
I really can't comment on that, and I really wanna comment on my report.
Okay, okay, well.
We can have a private discussion on it at a different time.
Over the years, I've learned a lot on um tree forestry and and that nature.
The college I went to did some major studies on.
Which which college?
College of Environmental Science and Forestry at Syracuse.
And where now?
At Syracuse.
Oh Syracuse, okay, very good. All right, um I guess I'll wait for your report. I mean, you, you, the timeframe of which you're gonna submit it, you're working on it now, but at what time do you imagine?
There is a lot of data that that's associated to that report. I mean, there's several thousand trees right now.
Right.
And I, and I have to report on each one of them. It's it's pretty instant.
All the thirty-five hundred?
I I didn't say thirty-five hundred.
You said thousands.
I said thousands, I didn't say thirty-five hundred.
Well, according to your original prelim, I go back to the preliminary.
Argue about the number of trees. It will be in his report, they'll be numbered.
I'll have a final number in my report.
Let me ask you, in the preliminary report, there were about thirty-five hundred valid trees.
That was a guesstimate. It was in, it was empirical, it was just.
Okay, it was extrapolated to that point, okay. All right, very good.
To answer your question, every single tree six inches or greater will be individually analyzed.
Wow, that that's quite a feat. All right, um and you're gonna have all that documentation done?
I'm working on it, it's it's a lot.
Do you have people helping you?
Again, Mister Chair.
This is gonna, I'm I'm just blown away. That's a lot of work. That's an awful lot.
All right, is there, is there anyone else?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to take a ten minute break now.
No sympathy.
Well, good, good, good luck with that.
Okay, so this lady's got him. This lady has your witness.
I don't want.
Good luck with your dogs.
Thank you.
You would have to go to the town council and say, I need fifteen thousand dollars for.
What do we do?
We're gonna give Mister Panic back?
You'll prove it.
I have a paperwork.
I I believe that's how it works.
So Stephen Levy's not participating, crossing him off the list.
You'd have to ask the the town council to give you money to hire an expert. You can't just go.
Okay, uh Ms. Krimko, I just wanna make it clear that I've been informed that Mister Panic will not be reappearing. He will be submitting a report to uh.
So again, let me, and let me just clarify for the record, cuz I think that some of the public may be under a a misconception. We are not going to spend eight hearings with Mister Panic up here, naming each of the individual trees, whether they're two thousand or three thousand, and defending his finding. The ordinance requires him to submit a report as a licensed professional and identify them based on his credentials. We're going to submit that report. The sole purpose of that report is not to say this tree can be saved, this tree can't be saved. It's purely and solely to determine a mathematical calculation of the number of trees we would be required to replace and or contribute. So, if the board has any questions or disagrees, or the public does, and they wanna put that out on the record and bring it up, then it's up to me to decide if I wanna bring Mister Panic back as to that specific issue. But he is not going to be here to go through a report that will likely be this big. Maybe we'll submit it via email only as to uh not save the, to save, I mean, it it is going to be, it is going to be voluminous. So I'll talk to Ron about maybe only submitting three hard copies and doing the rest electronically, but just so the public understands, their opportunity to question Mister Panic is tonight.
Well, since you bring it up, I I'd like to ask one quick question. So if the public would like to get their hands on this report, would you make it electronically available to them?
I always have on everything. I email Jackie and Peter every traffic report that we've had.
But you're, of course, you're not going to print it for them, cuz it's gonna be too voluminous, so they can print it themselves.
They can either pay the town to photocopy it, or I will email it to them, or get it to them electronically.
Just wanna make that clear, sir.
Okay, so I I just wanna kinda round back on something. So first of all, um have I I totally believe you're certified and an expert and all that kinda stuff. So there's nothing to do with, this is my question, my, my discussion has nothing to do with that. I'm sure you have the best interest of the trees at heart and all that kinda stuff. But Jim, what I'd like to know from you, okay, is as a, as a planning board, I think it's probably wise for us to know, or you to think through the methodology that you're gonna have, so that we can have a double check on the work that he has done, okay? I think it makes sense for us to know what that go, how that goes, because it's not a tree or two, it's thousands of trees, a big piece of property, you know? I don't want us to be put in a position where we're not getting a due diligence to his work for us. Not at the, it does, it could be, you you sample a hundred trees and you you find out the whole thing, just just tell us what the methodology's gonna be.
I will do is I will look at his report, and then when I see trees that I think may be borderline, I will flag them on on the report and go out and look at them. I will look at both trees that he has determined are not viable and shouldn't be counted, and trees that he has determined are viable and should be ca- should be counted, to double check and just to see what the difference is between them. And I I figure it would be somewhere, I'd probably look somewhere between fifty and a hundred trees.
Okay, great. If you gave us that methodology and we could go through that, that would be, that would be great. I mean, at least for me. I don't know about everybody else on the planning board, but we just wanted, we wanted some due diligence, I think, on it, okay?
And then Jim, you you issue a report.
Great.
Are there any other questions for Mister Panic, Mister?
I hope I'm not violating some prime directive, but you made it, Ms. Krimko made a comment before, and there was a, there's a reaction to it in the crowd. And I I agree that uh looking at the resolutions and the ordinances as they stand, the owner of the property could easily go in and take down an awful lot of trees without a permit.
No, he would need a, un, not true, Mister Hall.
The dead trees.
He would, no, he would still need a permit to do it.
Okay, but.
He wouldn't have to come to the, he wouldn't have to come to, well, I just wanna clarify, he wouldn't have to come to the board.
Oh, I I understand that.
He would submit for a tree removal permit based on a report by a certified tree expert that would go to Mister Kirk's office.
Right, but it was, it was just, in your comment, is if, given those those, that framework, we could go in and take those trees down tomorrow, basically, yes.
Once, once the report is finalized.
But you don't own the property yet, right? Do you own the property?
No, the owner could do that.
The owner could do that?
Correct.
Okay. There was a a kind of a murmur in the crowds, so I, we don't even think your client owns the property.
I am quite certain that if the, my client was willing to undergo the expenditure of taking down the trees to their benefit, the owner would give us authority to do that.
They probably would, but I was just trying to make the point that right now, your client does not own the property.
That is correct.
Thank you. That's all.
Just to follow up in the same line, y- is you're understanding that this report that you prepare is just an extended, to extend a courtesy to the public? Or is because it's due, i- is an obligation to the developer?
It it's, it's not a um courtesy to the public, it's mandatory when you remove trees. It's there's an ordinance in place and we're following the ordinance.
I had indicated the courtesy to the public was presenting it to the planning board, not just going through the tree removal permit process, which we or the owners would be entitled to do.
Okay, so he understands that there is a difference between the applicant and the owner? And this was, is the applicant's position, correct?
He was hired by the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a final question on uh Mister Fitzgerald. Could I take that walk with you when you go to look at the trees?
Higgins?
Mister Higgins.
Higgins, um that, first of all, the board would have to authorize that, and the owner of the property would have to authorize that. And there would have to be some sort of insurance on your part.
So the board would have to authorize if I could come with him?
It's, it's very unusual that any member of the public accompanies me when I do that.
I mean, my, my, my personal opinion is I, is I don't want Jim to be biased by anybody. Okay, so you can, if you, unless you wanna have another expert with you, then great, I don't wanna.
I would want somebody with with me is after I go look at the property, if I have questions about Mister Panic's report and some of his analysis, I might ask him to come out with me and explain why he made the decisions he made, rather than just totally overriding his opinion, because he, his expertise is much greater than mine. So I'd wanna have a reasonable explanation as to why he made the decisions he made.
So I couldn't go, but what if we hired, what if we had our own expert? Would they be able to go, just as a?
I don't think that your expert would function independently if everything were in place. Um but not to shadow Mister Higgins while he's doing his work. He's working for the board, your expert is working for you or your group.
The community. I don't have, it's not a Jackie issue, it's really, our town deals.
Well, no, 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 wait, but for the, it's not for the community or the town, it's for the individuals who hire this expert.
Yes. So, but that's separate than Mister Higgins. He has to be able to function separately because he is the board's expert who reviews things.
Well, would any of you go?
Excuse me, this, these are not questions, we're open to questions right now for the testimony. If Jackie has procedural questions as to what she can or can't do, I suggest that she call Ron's office, or you, or call me. You've emailed me, I've responded immediately, within the hour, every time. You've asked me for reports, you've asked me for information, I forwarded it to your traffic expert. I'm more than happy to communicate. If you have any question, I'd have to ask, if you have questions for our tree expert, please ask them.
No, I understand, uh uh but you both represent the developer and you're doing your jobs. I'm I'm representing myself as a taxpaying resident, and we, that's shocking to me that every single tree is gonna come down.
Do you have a question?
And yeah, this to this point, you will have time at the end for for comments, but it's just questions about Mister Panic's re- uh presentation, that's it.
Well, I I did ask, and I don't know if I got that answer before, to just say, if if you were working for me and I wanted to save as many trees, how many could be saved?
Well, that's not what his report is about.
As a, as a board member, I mean, I don't think she's asking an irrational question. I mean, to her point, he's in her best interest of doing it. If she would like to hire somebody who is a professional arborist, who has their credentials, has the licensing, has the insurance and all the qualifications, I I would make a motion of the board to allow her to hire somebody that would be qualified to uh to go on to the.
But I think there's also a misconception here that an applicant is required to save trees.
No, I'm not saying that at all.
No, no, but on the part of the public, I think there's a misconception. The applicant is required to replace the viable trees that he removes.
And that's it. Your ordinance does not have a requirement to save trees.
The only requirement to save trees is that you ha- they have to provide some sort of protection for those trees that they're showing on the plans that are to be saved. A mechanism for protection, basically protecting within the uh the drip line of the trees, so that they don't damage the roots of the trees that would be saved. But there's no requirement in the ordinance that they have to save trees on the site. They could, as far as, as far part of a site plan application, take down every tree on the site as long as they replaced the trees according to the ordinance requirements.
But the ordinance is old at this point. I mean, I think it, the ordinance needs to be redone based on the amount of trees that are already been taken down.
Ms. Krimko.
I have to object, the ordinance that's.
Sustain your objection.
The ordinance that's in place is the rule that we need to follow, and even if an ordinance were to be changed, it would not apply to this project.
That's correct. Nor would any change in ordinance apply to this board.
I understand, it's just the environment that we're living in right now, and it's about.
I have to object.
You know, it's a gotcha.
This is for the comment portion, not questions.
Yes.
So I guess you never answered my question, though. I asked the question. Could it be, could, if I wanted to save the trees, could, how many could be saved? Cuz at this point, most of them are coming down.
I did answer your question, and I just said it's, it, right now, it's beyond saving. It's just out of control there.
Okay, so it was my land I would say.
That was my answer before.
Okay, thank you.
And you had indicated that the, that the land should be clear cut and left fallow for time, so the invasive species could not regenerate, and then replanted with more appropriate trees, is that correct?
That was correct.
Thank you.
How much would something like that cost?
To.
Clear it, remediate and replant.
Replant.
Um I can't tell you that number. I basically save trees, I don't really take them down, I mean, this, I can't. I mean, there are people who do that, I'm, that's not my forte.
Okay, we have another questioner here, Mister Bay.
Hello, Jim Bay, David Street. Uh regarding the GP eleven permit, what was your involvement, if any, associated with GP eleven? Any involvement?
I'm not familiar with that.
Ju- just the routine DEP permit, so they didn't have any checklist or anything from you on that?
No, it didn't require that.
They're also waiting for the routine transition waiver from the DEP. Did you have any involvement with the routine transition waiver?
I just, my involvement is just in the tree study, did I, did I testify on?
And that's just for the.
That's it.
The scour holes, okay?
Yeah.
In the fifty foot transition zone, just on a routine basis, can you add trees to the transition zone, or can you remove trees in the routine?
I have to, Mister Bay, respectfully, you're asking about DEP regulations. He's not here as a DEP expert, or anyone that particip-, or someone who participated in the DEP application. He can't speak to DEP regulations.
The transition zone is fifty feet.
No, the transition, you're speaking about the buffer area from the wetlands. And that fifty foot area, what you can or can't do in that is not his area of expertise, nor is it something that he testified to.
Okay.
He he, you asked him if he participated in the submission, he said no. So he's not gonna speak generally about what you can or can't plant according to DEP regulations.
Okay, the twenty to thirty trees that are semi specimen trees, are they within the fifty foot zone?
They, I'm not, I can't really answer that question. I mean, uh someone from the uh.
Are there ma- any meaningful number of the twenty or thirty trees up north?
As far as what?
Physically located in the northern area, near the wetlands.
Yeah, there are. There are some, and and those trees um are not gonna be tou- I mean, there's a number of trees that won't be touched. They'll be preserved, and there are some of the trees in my study, of the specimens, that I recommend uh removing them or or treating them to save them.
Okay. The the buffer area near the library, you mentioned you're uh very respectfully saving as many trees as you can, and we appreciate that. In the, if the board were to request the seventy-five foot berm be built on the north side as the ordinance. as the ordinance can allow them to request from the applicant, the outside of the 50-foot transition zone would be, if they were to request the applicant put in a berm, there would be a berm outside of the 50-foot transition zone. Do you have knowledge of the tree plantings and how that would be? Which of the specimen trees, if the board were to direct them to put a berm?
I would be very careful about any berm because if there are existing trees, you're asking those trees just to die. So if we're trying to preserve trees, a berm is not the way to do it.
So in the area from the 50-foot, which is the transition zone from the wetlands, 50-foot plus 75-foot on the north side, if they were to request a berm on the north side so that the homeowners didn't have to look at the buildings? In that area, are there any of the specimens?
What I would, again, I would be very careful. More than two inches of soil disturbance is enough to kill the trees. I'm recommending with the landscape architect and their engineers, trees that'll give you, that are evergreen, deer resistant, that will grow fast and give a great buffer to those people so they don't see those buildings.
In the area from 70, from 50 feet to 50 feet plus 75, if the berm is requested up there, are there any specimens in that area?
I can't answer that question at this time.
Okay. On the south side, if the board was to direct near Deal Road, that the berm be built on the Deal Road side, which is according to the the ordinance, they can request a 75-foot berm, would there be any specimen trees in the 75 feet from the Deal Road?
That's possible, there are, and again, I would caution against berms for, I mean, you're looking for different problems other than choking the trees out. Anything more than two inches on the root area is enough to harm the tree. If the specimens, and there are enough specimens that are going to be left on that side. So I would say at this point, I would not recommend a berm.
So the Deal Road side has numerous.
There are, there are a number of of specimen trees there, yes.
Are they within the 75-foot berm area?
I, there would be an answer for the engineer to look at, I couldn't answer that.
So you haven't measured?
That wasn't my, my, I wasn't asked to look at that.
Okay, later, once you do the count, are you going to GPS each one of them?
They're already being done, a lot of them are already done, they're GPSed.
So we'll be able to look at there and see whether?
They'll be on a map and they'll be, you'll be, you'll have access to that map.
So we can then determine whether in the 75-foot berm area near Deal Road?
That's correct.
Like I indicated, Mr. Bay, once we have the survey, we could present an exhibit showing an overlay of the proposed development to show exactly where they are.
I appreciate your help and thank you Friday for your help. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
I have a question. When you say you preserve a tree, how do you preserve a tree?
Well, first of all, during construction, we would have a fence that would keep any kind of equipment, any kind of fill, soil, any kind of thing that might aggravate the tree roots near the drip line. So primarily, it's done by fencing.
Okay.
Okay, are there any more questions from anyone in the audience regarding Mr. Panix's testimony? Nothing, then we should close this, close this portion anyway.
Close this portion.
Okay, next witness is the architect Gabriel Massa.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is Gabriel.
It's calling 10 o'clock. Do you have a pointer?
Uh, I do, but I don't know if it's working.
Stand up there when I present.
No, which which is the button to point?
Massa or Massa?
Massa, I believe Massa, M-A-S-S-A. Correct.
And Mr. Chairman, are we going to get copies of this emailed to us or like the PowerPoints? That have been presented because I like to have a collection of the materials.
And what the, what the?
I appreciate you saving paper.
Yeah, no, but what the PowerPoints are really just taken from what's already been submitted. So you actually have copies of all of this already, just not compiled in a pretty picture for a presentation. If I could have Mr. Massa sworn?
Sure, Mr. Massa, raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth and the whole truth to help you God?
Yes.
Thank you, can you just state and spell your name for the record, please?
Gabriel J. Massa, G-A-B-R-I-E-L, middle initial J, capital M, A-S-S-A.
Mr. Massa, I know you're a licensed architect and the principal and founder of the company MMA, but why don't you just take a minute or two and qualify yourself in the field of architecture?
Sure, I've been licensed for roughly 30 years.
So you're not as old as they.
Not as old. I I have an office right around the corner from here. I've been doing retail, I've had the firm for about 23 years. I've been doing primarily retail work in New Jersey and various states. I hold licenses, I think, in 35 to 40 different states in the country. I've done work from as far as Maine, all the way to Florida, Texas, Missouri, California, and I've done a lot of work in in New Jersey. We're actively involved on the waterfront of Asbury. We were involved in Fort Monmouth, we were involved in Middletown Town Center. So we're actively involved in all the projects in New Jersey.
Before, before, before he, before we say, can I ask him a question?
Go right ahead.
Have you done anything of this scope?
Oh, sh, over the years, absolutely, yes.
Can you give an example of?
You know, I, can I give an example? I've probably done a lot of work for Paramount that's similar in nature in restoring some of their centers, probably for Urban Edge. You know, that that there's so many projects that our firm does, I wouldn't be able to be specific with any. I could follow up and provide you a location of similar scale.
Yeah, I would, I would like to have a couple that you've done that have of the same size.
Yeah, I'd be glad to.
That also maybe had the balance between residential and commercial, which is all about.
And and that, Mr. Weinstein, that leads me to the next question because Mr. Massa's office and Gabriel, you didn't, Gabe, you didn't prepare all of the plans that have been submitted, correct?
Correct.
So for example, Lenar Holmes has an in-house architect who prepared the residential town home elevations and floor plans, correct?
Right.
Chick-fil-A, because that was the fast food restaurant that currently is looking and that's the prototype that we used. They had their own in-house architect that also signed, sealed and prepared those plans.
Correct.
The same goes for Wawa, the hotel, as well as, trying to think if that was it on site that did it, that would, those are the ones. So your office really?
Fo- focused on the Turning Point, focused in on the financial building and focused in on the retail buildings.
Okay, and but you're speaking, since you're the project, you're the project architect and the architect of record, you oversaw all of this and all of these plans and the various architects throughout the country came through your office for your review and submission and you're presenting all of them here tonight as an expert in the field of architecture.
Yes, yes, we wanted to make sure there was a cohesive design and that everything kind of worked well with each other.
So with that and turning to the PowerPoint that you have.
So yeah, let me, let me turn it to your, I'm going to accept, I have a question for you. Where'd you get your architectural degree, sir?
Kent State University.
Oh, okay, well, we're going to accept your credentials, so you can proceed. So I'm, I'm just going to walk you through the various buildings on site. I'm going to start with the convenience store, which is known as the Wawa here. And then I'm going to go up here to the Chick-fil-A and then I'm going to work my way to the Turning Point, the Miller House, the financial building, the four retail tenant, the the hotel. And then I'm going to show you some illustrations of the fourplex and the sixplex developed by Lenar. Make you switch that page. So you're probably very familiar with this building. This is the Wawa that people are basically know very well. It's got quality material, it is built out of ephes, it's got a stone water table, it's got metal standing seam roof. Go to the next slide. This is the the dispensing area, there's six fueling stations, 12 dispensers and a typical canopy with a standing seam roof. Yeah, I'm glad you went to this because the black and white was hard to read. This is your.
Turn the lights down a little bit?
Yeah, it might help with the graphic.
Just the front row. This is the last one. Guys, we have a camera.
Maybe one more, maybe the front row.
Okay.
That's good.
So I'm sure you're familiar with the Chick-fil-A, a lot of them are ephes. This one is fully brick, so it's an upgraded version. Like all the buildings, it's an earth tone color palette. Next slide, Nick. This is the, one of the designs we did in-house. This is the Turning Point and the Turning Point has a restaurant on the lower level and they're going to put their corporate offices above. This is the back elevations that's facing Deal. This is facing the the urban chug handle inside. These are the side elevations.
And I think importantly, we're not seeking any variances as it relates to the architecture, number of stories, height, building size, anything like that, correct?
That's a great point, yes, we're in full compliance. Next slide, this is the Miller Ale House that's next to the Turning Point. Again, cultural stone, composite wood planking, you know, and standing seam metal roof. So all the materials are very similar throughout the complex. Different colors, but they're all earth tone color palette. This is the, that building I was telling you about with four units. We, one of our favorite buildings on site, we have some pitched roofs here. Again, similar materials with with the composite panels, the ephes, the water table. This is the financial bank, the the bank, we don't have a tenant for it yet, but this is the the bar we've set for the quality of the design that we're expecting for this bank. And again, very, very similar materials.
Just a, just a quick question, so in the instance of a bank, how does it work? If if, let's say Chase is the tenant, then do they then submit designs back to you and then you come back to us or how does that, I'm just curious procedurally how that works?
And Jen, you may want to.
Yeah, no, so what we're making, we're showing representations of the type of materials, the color, the building footprint clearly. If anything changes, that is, I think your ordinance allows your directive of community development to allow changes such as access awnings, windows, things like that. But if it's anything substantial, for example, if if we move a loading zone or we change the building configuration, then that might be required to, I mean, it's really going to be in Ron's discretion as to what would come back. So what we're showing you is the building size, the building height, the types and quality of materials, the signage locations. If, for example, the Turning Point for some reason didn't go here, a new tenant might want a different color palette, might want windows in different locations, things like that. Depending on the extent of the changes, it would be determined by the township whether or not it's something that comes back to the board.
Yeah, our, our goal is to really set the bar for the quality of the building that's going to be put here and, yeah, we're not going to do a bait and switch and.
This is old, I'm sure from what was first handed out a while back. You're showing us, as you just said, that just the style of it. How would we be able to tell the colors of each building? Or is this a pretty safe, or is this just a?
Well, that building has changed, that's not the same.
Well, that's what I mean, you're giving us a black and white color.
Well, we're not committing to colors.
Well, I'm just asking.
No, no, I'm, I'm letting you know, so what what we're presenting to you now is what we anticipate to be the colors. It could be that a different tenant occupies the building.
Got it, but what color is that?
Well, that's, that's a combination of earth tone colors. I think you'd find that it's just probably more attractive than that building if we had that three-dimensional perspective.
There is, the ordinance doesn't have any standards as far as architecture is concerned. So really, the board, the board's limited somewhat as to requiring certain colors and alike. We're making representation as to the quality and the type, but we can change, just like a commercial structure could paint after, you know, a year after getting approval.
But we, we could ask you to be consistent with your colors. We can ask you what colors to use on your site.
You can certainly, you can certainly ask, the ordinance doesn't authorize you to require it, though.
I didn't say that the ordinance, we, we have in past have asked applicants to form a uniform color for their site. So to say that we can't is not true.
Let me just bring some clarity to our, our submission. It's because when we submit to, for submission, for a formal planning board submission, it has, it's usually a two-dimensional drawing because if you can look at the illustrations, we, we, we identify the heights, we identify all the different wall materials. So usually in a perspective, you don't have that. So a two-dimensional drawing is basically a requirement.
And we did, and we did submit them and just.
Can we ask that you give us an idea of the colors?
We are and I'll, well, what you're seeing here is the idea of what the colors are.
It's black and white.
No, it's actually.
It's, it's, it's the lighting, it's, it's.
No, it's grays and some greens, I think, are in there.
We're you, we're using a gray tone and an earth tone color.
Well, I think, I think what, I think what she's getting at is we're trying.
She'd like to see a perspective.
Well, we're trying to get an understanding of what the feel is going to be for this community. That's what we're trying to get to and how it all gets put together.
You can't see it, well, there, I can submit a copy.
This might help you with.
For the board's record. And you know what, you can have this one and I can move it in now. This is A67 and it's just a copy of the PowerPoint. And for example, on the building that is referencing, you can see there's green awnings, there's brick, there's light gray.
Just, just, just on a scope question.
Sure.
Architecturally, are you the person that's thinking about the feel and the je ne sais quoi of this whole environment? Are you, are you the person to think about that?
You know, we have a major design studio and a lot of the principals are actively involved. I'm in that studio every single day and I'm involved in not only this project, many in the firm. It's important, it's why we, we get hired, so.
So you're, so you're the one who's giving the opinion if the look and feel is consistent? That's what we should be looking for you first, okay?
Yeah, yeah, it's not just me, I think, you know, I let my staff weigh in as well.
Yeah, but you're representing.
Yeah.
Yes, he's confident.
Okay, yes, okay.
If I could just ask, at what point does like renewable energy enter into this? Is there, you know, again, with the master plan coming out, you know, the energy master plan and all of that? At what point, you know, solar or or anything like that, at what point does that consider?
Well, look, you know, you know, we're a big advocate of being green, I'm LEED AB. So, you know, we look at making sure that, you know, we use materials that are sourced within a five mile radius to meet the LEED requirements, you know? We're going to be using LED lighting for, for our signage. All the lighting now in in new buildings is probably going towards LEED, right? So and a lot of the retailers are also LEED initiatives, right? We're on the buildings we're building, we're going to use cool roofs, right? So. So yes, it's, it's extremely important to us. I mean, we have to do the right thing.
I mean, solar is going to be part of that, you think, on some of the roofs?
Well, that, that's a totally different equation. I think that the solar has to do, the PVs have to do with the available credits and you'd really need to get an expert on here to determine if, if there's a return on investment.
So let me follow up on my problem that I'm having with these colors or look of. So the center where the commercial buildings are, from what Jennifer kind of blew by me here, where they were gray with green or, and the hotel, I'm sure has corporate colors. Are they matching, are they going to?
Well, I, I.
This is too much of a development of buildings and residential to just give us what I just saw.
Right.
I know I can't ask for it or I can't demand it, but.
Well, no, but I guess the problem is close, the problem that representing an applicant that we had and Dr. Mennano, you can ask, but there are parameters as to what the board can impose. And, no, 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 I understand that, I just, I wanted to clarify my statement. And one of the problems is, is that since you don't have architectural guidelines and since you don't have a directive on the ordinance as to what is deemed appropriate, there are no standards.
I disagree with you, I really do, I do, because in past, this board has directed colors.
And if they did, then it was.
square, we have.
Then it was because the applicant agreed to it.
So you're not agreeing to it?
They needed signed. Uh, they needed sign variances, and it wasn't with the building that they agreed to. Being the applicant's attorney, they agreed to limiting colors on the signage only. They did not agree to the colors as to the buildings.
Not to give you a hard time, Jennifer, but you're not agreeing with this.
Well, uh, again, what I'm saying is, what it does, it, because it's not part of an ordinance, and there are no standards, it comes down to what does Dr. Di Benedetto think is a nice color? What does Ms. Close think of as a nice color?
The light wall up...
And, but, but again, what Ms. Weinstein, there, it's, it's too arbitrary and capricious, there's no parameters for it.
Okay, but if there were a color rendering of some sort so that...
We could, we, you know...
So we can see what it really will look like?
Yes.
You know, I mean, this is such a big site, and so many people are upset about so many different things on this site. I would think that it would help or make them feel better, at least if they could just get an idea what they're gonna be looking at from Deal Road.
And, and again, but again respectfully, I don't know that it's gonna make anybody feel better 'cause every member of the public and every member of the board may have a different aesthetic opinion as to what is attractive or what isn't attractive.
Alright, so, eh, so you're saying if I see like, if you have neon pink on one of the buildings, and we find that objectionable, you, you don't, you just think it's, because it's not part of the ordinance, we don't have any right to say anything about it? I mean, i- it's just, you know, we're just at, listen, all we're doing is asking for some color renderings, that's it.
And we're, we, we have an architect that spent years preparing this, and Estelle's vaguely saying, "We don't like the colors you chose."
No, I'm not saying that, I'm saying you can't see the colors you chose.
So, I, I just wanted to add to, one of the reasons why you don't wanna put restrictions on color. In the future, if somebody else moves in, right, you, you, the different brand comes in. I, I get it, did you wanna see some colors, and we can put some illustrations together for you, I, I have no problem. Cause I like the color palette, and I don't think...
I'm sure it's fine, it's just that you really get it though.
I don't think it does justice, this color, this lighting, I mean, we have high-definition TVs, but... But, you know, Jen's right, eh, 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 you know, you don't wanna restrict colors. But we're not using neon, so...
Are, are we at the question part, or you have more to present?
Uh, that, the hotel is, uh...
Don't make me do neon.
It's a hundred and fourteen keys, um, it's cement board siding, eh, it's an earth toned color palette. It has some design features, it has an outdoor basketball court, uh, designated patio areas, uh, first floor houses, indoor pool, fitness, main dining room, and several meeting and gathering spaces. This is the, uh, go back for a minute, this is the view that's facing the, uh, the urban road, or the urban jug handle.
And all of those facilities that you just mentioned that were outside, as was testified to by Jeremy, those are all interior to the site on the south side of the building, correct?
Yes.
And, and for instance, where would the branding go on, you know, where would the Marriott or the Hyatt or whatever it's gonna be?
It's actually on the elevation, right, it's right...
Can you blow that up a little bit?
It's right here, and I think it's, I'm trying to remember now where it's been. I don't have those illustrations. Alright, it's the top left-hand corner, right Nick, it's top left-hand corner and it's... There's one right there.
We did submit full-size architecturals, and they are on those plans that show it, where the signage is.
Yeah, it's, it's not oversized signage, signage is really important to our firm, like, we just...
Sure.
We don't wanna make it gaudy and, yeah. It's not billboard signage.
And will that be lit up?
It'll be LED lighting.
It will be LED lighting, okay.
All signage now, I think, that we spec is LED.
Okay.
Alright, Nick, can you zoom back out and then move to the next? So let me go to the housing, so there's a fourplex and there's a twoplex. Can you just go back to the site plan for a moment, Nick, back to the first page real quick? So, this, there's only one fourplex, and the rest are sixplex, and they're a combination of three to four bedrooms. And they're being designed by Lennar. So, we think they're a handsome design, we think it works well.
Can you enlarge that, please?
Sure, uh, Nick, can you, could you be kind enough to enlarge that? I mean, just looking at the quality of the, of the design, the garage doors, uh, it's definitely upgraded features inconsistent with the typology of the area. So this is the, uh, the sixplex, eh, eh, go to the next one, Nick, is there, I think this probably concludes my presentation. Is that it?
That's it.
Um, I wanted, I wanted to answer your question about the, um, I don't know if this is in your jurisdiction or not.
I'll try to answer it.
So, um, one thing I, one thing I'm just kinda curious about is the turnover of stores that, you know, cause you were saying different. So the Ale House, is, eh, what, does anybody know what kind of, um, is this the, the second one they've had, the third one they have? What's the, what's the, what's the demographics of the tenant?
I don't know the answer to that, I know they're a familiar brand, um, we have them...
Honestly, don't call me, don't quote me on this, but there's one in Mount Laurel I know, and I know there's one in Woodbridge.
Okay.
And that's not definitive, again, that's who we are hoping to get there as a tenant. In the event that changes again, if the footprint changes or the design changes, we would have to come back.
But you're buil- but you're billing, but you're billing out to be a microbrewery, is that what that is?
It's a microbrewery type restaurant.
So then the microbrewery type restaurant has to be going in there again, right?
Or someone would have to, if there's...
Or someone would have to fit it out and pay money to fit it out, right?
I mean, that happens all the time in shopping centers where you have a tenant in a, in a, either a strip or an individual standalone, and they change it and you come back to make a change.
Yeah, my only, my only, my only, my only statement about that is, is companies like, uh, Chick-fil-A and Chase Bank, they've figured it out, if the, the probability of them picking the right spot is probably higher. And so, I have less concerns about those well-established companies figuring it out correctly.
You know, what, what really works for this site is, what's important in development of any shopping center is, you know, make sure they're successful. You know, you wanna make sure you have food and beverage, you wanna make sure you have essential services, you wanna make sure you have fuel, you wanna make sure you have a quick-service restaurant, hotel. These are things that people are coming to the site with, that's what'll help you be successful.
Let me just focus on the microbrewery, cause the microbrewery is one that has to have good traffic, right, in and out, otherwise it won't survive.
And that's the great thing about the urban jug handle, right? There is, there is traffic that goes around that jug handle. So there's people that pass it not only by...
But you're not all for any traffic.
No, no, I'm not traffic, sorry, sorry, anyway.
Okay.
Sorry, I got away from myself.
Okay.
Could you remind me again, I know you said it before, where in that cluster will that be, the Ale House?
Oh, sure, the Ale House, let me bring that up for you, is right here, and the Turning Point's right here. This is the bank, this is that retail strip, this is the Wawa, this Chick-fil-A and the hotel.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Anyone else on the board have a question?
No questions.
No questions.
You can open to the public. Is that you, Joe?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a question?
No.
I just saw your hand up.
No, I, I, I was scratching my head.
I understand that. So anybody from the public like to ask a question of this particular witness regarding his testimony only? Go right ahead, sir. You have someone there?
Nope.
Oh, she's up already, sorry.
Hi, Mr. Rosa. Eh, in the thirty-six states that you say you are licensed from Florida to Texas to Missouri, you say that you like to, eh, your job is to have a cohesive design.
Yes.
Have you seen any other, have you worked in another town center that has a gas station, eh, retail restaurants, and, eh, the townhomes and a hotel?
You know, f- fuel is extremely important, all the centers we design, cause it's an essential service. We wanna make sure that we get traffic on-site, and I can tell you that I've put fuel in a lot of the centers that we've designed.
Eh, you said that the Wawa and Lennar, they had their own in-house architect, but you're directly involved in the Turning Point, correct?
Yes, we're, we've designed that building, yes, correct.
And the Turning Point is the first building on facing thirty-five, correct? The one that you have on?
Right there, yes, correct.
Eh, I know that the shades of colors of green and gray is, seem to be important, but the, isn't the trash containers are gonna be facing Deal Road?
The trash containers are actually facing inside, inside the, um, uh, the jug handle, they're right here.
They are gonna be to the right or facing Deal Road?
They're facing here, this is where the deliveries and service will come in to grab those containers.
What is the loca- eh, the building right next to it?
This is the Turning Point, this is what separates these two buildings.
Yeah, what is the next building over, what is, what is the use?
Oh, this is a restaurant.
Another restaurant, so, and the entrance to the, the entrance to the patrons is gonna be facing where?
Yeah, right here in the front, and right here in the front.
So both buildings, they, that they are but to each other, their, eh, trash and their, eh, pickup is going to be next to each other, so they don't face Deal Road?
Well, they're, they're, they're being shared, so every restaurant needs services, so...
Correct.
They need for loading, they need, uh, to eliminate their waste.
I agree, but they are not gonna face Deal Road?
Well, the, right, correct, the, the backs of them might, in this area here.
The backs, but the refuse, the containers are not gonna face Deal Road, is that, that's my question.
No, they're, they're, they're facing the, 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 the parking lot, this is how they're gonna be serviced.
When you first gave, eh, overview of the site, you named each one of the buildings, but you skipped the gas station. Is there any reason you only called convenience store, but no?
I called it a convenience store, I thought I called it a convenience store, Wawa, and then I thought I talked about the six fueling stations and the twelve...
No, you skipped that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
When the first, you look back at the, at the tape...
It was unintentional if I did, I'm, my apologies.
You enumerate each one of the sites except the gas station, you just mentioned the convenience store. Later, later, okay. Yeah, okay, now, my next question, you say that the Wawa has a typical canopy. What is the typical canopy, the height?
The, the one that I illustrated with the, uh, one-sided pitch.
Okay, what is that height of the canopy?
Oh, the height of the canopy?
Yeah.
Um, Nick, can you bring up that drawing? The height of the canopy, let me see if I remember what that is. Uh, it's in compliance with the zoning ordinance, um, twenty-one eight?
Twenty-one eight?
Mm-hmm, there it is, right there, right there. Uh, twenty-one two, my apologies.
What kind of truck or, eh, tractor-trailer accommodates a twenty-one foot canopy?
Well, that's the top of the canopy, Ms. Hanud, I think you said so.
Okay, or the bottom of the canopy is thirteen feet or thirteen point six, what is it?
Can you zoom in on that, Nick, for me, please? I can't, I can't, my eyes are so bad, fourteen feet.
It's fourteen feet, so that accommodates a tractor-trailer?
Well, the tractor-trailer would go around the outside of it, but that's more for Civil to address for you.
Okay, now, your company had, eh, put for the public, you have it online, several videos. What is the purpose of those, eh, videos that you have?
Oh, well, you know, to help our clients understand the design, being transparent.
Ah, being transparent, okay. So that portrays the true accurate picture of what you, is gonna be this site?
Well, no, I think, I think you, you have to understand animations and renderings, right? We're, we're trying to design something where there's only limited tools out there, there's only a limited amount of plant life in a library, there's unlimited amount of people, limited amount of cars. We try to replicate what, uh, the designers, civil engineers, and the architects are developing. We try to match material based on RGB colors, maps that they have, we're trying to replicate the building.
Okay, you have on the Wawa, eh, rendering of what your video portrays, there is one small sedan, one van, and a lady by the gas station. Is that like a boutique kind of Wawa that this is location is gonna be?
Mr. Chair, I have to object, there was, there was significant amount of testimony at previous hearings that the video was not accurate as to the traffic, nor was it intended to be a depiction of traffic. It was to show the materials and the layout as per the design at the time, which back in December and January has changed dramatically since then.
I'm not talking about traffic, only I'm talking about the design that his firm had put online for the public to see that video as the design.
Let me, let me clarify that. The, what's important about the animation and the renderings is to develop what the building's gonna look like. Putting the cars and the people, the designers don't have, they don't know what the car volumes are, they don't know how many people are there. Many times they don't even, you know, th- those are just objects that we're putting in the rendering to help bring a scale to the building, to see if the building's overpowering. Just to give you a sense of, eh, you know, how does the building feel, like, you know? You walk by a big, huge apartment store that feels fifty feet in the air, you feel uncomfortable, it just goes to show you human scale. It's not to depict the actual conditions that is indicated.
Exactly, it's not to depict the actual conditions.
No, no, but it is depicting the curves, the, where the, where the landscaping areas are.
But in any way was it intended to imply the amount of traffic or people?
No, no, it's, eh, and that's taking it out of context, no, it's not.
But you say it was supposed to be transparent, correct?
But, eh, I, I'm not a traffic person, I'm not here to put the, the, the purpose of the videos, no.
No, no, not about traffic, I just, eh, talking about the design, you as an architect, as, eh, you are, eh, putting this nice video for the public to see it, and it's, eh, it does, eh, in your view, portrays the actual, eh, Wawa stations that they are around the area, or just some conceptual...
No, this, this is what they're gonna build, you know, eh, eh, you know, you, you need to s- eh, we're being so transparent with these illustrations, you're, you're lucky you're not getting just a Prisma color and a marker with a, with some colored pencils, because that could be submitted as well. What we're submitting here is to try to show you the, the bar that we're trying to build for you, and it's a high bar. So I just, you know, I just want you to understand that the, the renderings you're getting are way in above normal submission requirements.
Yeah, but it portrays like an ideal, idyllic site that with one car doing that orbiting handle.
Miss, I think you're being argumentative here, so would you just pose a question, please?
Are you going to prepare another true accurate and transparent video with now all the new, eh, eh, tenants and the new traffic that we have been dealing with?
Miss, you're asking the witness, uh, if he's going to resubmit his information in a way that you might fi- find more palatable, and I think that may be, uh, argumentative as well.
He's portraying for the public, for the residents.
Ms. Hanud, we're not, as I said at, at least one other hearing, probably two, we are not presenting another video animation.
Okay, thank you, but that is not transparent, it's not accurate.
I have to object, this is questions, not comments.
Again, you're being argumentative. Can we reserve your comments for the commentary period at the end of the hearing, thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Good evening, my name's Mark Comer, I live on Marissa Court. I'm just gonna walk over in front of this for one second, and then I'll come back in front of the microphone.
Want a pointer, Mr. Comer?
Take it with you. Oh, okay, I just take it out? Okay, just so you know, I live about here, and this is Angela Borelli, she lives about here. So I'm just curious, of these buildings, are there windows on the side looking south?
Nick, can you bring up that elevation for us, the end condition? Right there. It's a beautiful side elevation.
So is that south looking, or is that...
They're, they're opposite, both ends.
So that'll be going both south and north?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, uh, I hope my tree line grows in despite the deer. That was my question.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions. So you're saying the front on that we're gonna see is just the front of the house where it looks like here, kinda like a prison in the back, which is, I guess, the garage?
Well, they, though, those are pretty nice garage doors if you actually physically see them.
The drawing, they look like cars.
You're gonna see, you're gonna see the end conditions, you're gonna see the end conditions.
Well, the top drawing looks like the front of the house, which... Well, the top drawing looks like the front of the house, which we see from our street line throughout town. Mostly, we don't see the garage, are we gonna see the garage?
No, you're, you're gonna see this elevation on the end condition with, if the gentleman pointed out where you lived.
Okay.
Can you go back to that, Nick, can you go back to the plan? Right, see, these are, these are the end conditions, so they're gonna look like, uh, four homes.
Okay.
Right, the four elevations, and the garages are, you know, inbound, in here. So, no, you're not gonna see them, oh, you might catch an angle of it, but.
How far is the, uh, closest unit to the street?
I could let the engineer probably answer that question, I don't know, sorry.
And is it necessary for them to be connected and not separate? Like, is that necessary, that they're banks of homes, as opposed to more consistent with our master plan, which are?
I, I, I don't know, the performer Lennar used, I, I don't know.
So you weren't involved in the drawing of the residential, it was just commercial?
We, we were involved in development of the commercial area, and Lennar designed these units.
And, and again, what we're proposing is entirely consistent with the ordinance, as well as the master plan reexamination report, which does not call for single-family homes here detached, it calls for townhomes, and we're in conformance with that.
I know, but we keep talking about the ordinance, and that ordinance is in, in being challenged right now.
I have to object, that's not a question of, in the witness.
Questions on the witness about his presentation.
The ordinance that is currently in place is in place and is valid until such time as it's overturned, that's the ordinance that governs this board.
I only bring it up because you mentioned the ordinance, and I just, our attorney can't understand why we're doing a whole planning board process on an ordinance that may be dismissed, and then it all has to go back again, so it, it is a good question.
But that's not a question for, for this witness.
No, I was asking about the connection of the homes, and if they were, could be separated, but Mrs. Crimco said.
You actually had stated that it wasn't consistent with the master plan.
No, I didn't use the word master plan, you did.
You absolutely did, and you said it wasn't consistent with the master plan, and what I was correcting was that it is consistent with the master plan as recently adopted through their master plan reexamination report, and it is consistent with the ordinance. And until such time that that is overturned, or an amended version is adopted, that is the law of the Land Tier and Ocean Township.
Well, I mean, no, because you keep saying it's the master plan, the master plan is not for connected houses, there was an ordinance change. Well, I'm not, I'm not, I don't think I can be accused of being argumentative, I'm just trying to stand. What is a master plan? No, a master plan has not really been, the master plan does not have connected houses.
Question to him about what he presented?
Well, I asked him, could it be single? Do they have to be attached, was my question.
Okay, and he answered that someone else designed them, so it's not.
Okay, so, the parking lot, um, does there need to be so much parking lot? When I look at the map.
I have to object, that's not a question for the architect, he's only testifying as to the buildings. The engineer offered all of the testimonies that relates to the site layout.
So, just, we're just talking about the structures.
Correct.
The, the architecture, yeah.
So we probably shouldn't even look at this sheet, but.
Well, I guess there's really nothing I could say then, I mean, the housing, I, looks like a, it looks like.
I have to object, she's offering a comment and not offering.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp.
Scott Sharp, Sunset Avenue One Mass. As the architect, I don't know if, I have one question for this gentleman. Regarding the hotel, does it have a basement?
No.
No, thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
Questions, you mean?
Questions, yes, I do, that's what I'm used to.
We had a lot of comments.
Well, maybe I'll get some questions if asked for comments, how about that? That would be nice.
Hi, Jim Bay, David Street again. There's a reference of, um, the Turning Point had a office space up above.
Yes.
And on one of the administrative letters, they referenced it as four thousand seven hundred and fifty-four feet. Is the ordinance four thousand square feet?
I, I, I don't know anything about that letter, um.
Is it four thousand seven hundred and fifty-four feet on the office space?
On the office space, currently, we have, um, roughly about forty-five eighty, I believe. I, I mean, I can't confirm, that's just.
I can address that for you.
Please.
Well, and I'm doing this from memory, and I'll have Jim correct me if I'm wrong. What the, what the ordinance says is, you can have ten thousand square feet of office, and you can have an additional four thousand square feet, if that additional four thousand is being used for the, um, office space for the restaurant below. So it doesn't limit the amount of office that can be over the restaurant, it limits the square footage of office space in total allowed in the center, which is fourteen thousand square feet.
My understanding, and I could really be wrong on this, is above the restaurant, it shouldn't exceed four thousand feet.
Or, again, the applicant's interpretation is that you're allowed ten thousand square feet of office, and an additional four thousand, if that additional four thousand is above the restaurant and being used as the restaurant corporate offices. And I believe, I believe that's our only office space, correct? So we have a, we have a total of forty-five hundred square feet of office, where ten, fourteen thousand is allowed.
Thank you. The increase of the square footage took place between February and now, from fourteen thousand to twenty-four thousand eight hundred. Is that all in the bank, or the ten thousand square feet, is that other than in the bank?
No, the bank is not fourteen thousand square feet.
Ten thousand of the, uh, it's a portion of the ten thousand, but it's not the whole ten thousand.
Now, the site engineer went, actually testified to in the concept plan, made reference, and it will be in the revised plans that are being submitted. I believe he had indicated that the fast food restaurant got a little bit larger, was his testimony. I believe there were changes with regard to the retail.
Yeah, it was all in the retail, yes.
Yeah, he's shaking his head, so there was the retail, the fast food restaurant, and what? And Restaurant B was made bigger, originally was shown as a sushi restaurant, now it's Miller's Air Ha- as the Miller's Air House prototype, it's shown as a larger structure, but again, that was all based on a concept, and great questions, because we haven't submitted the revised drawings, because we're waiting for the traffic expert from the neighbors, but we will be submitting revised drawings that show all of those square footages.
All the condos down here.
You can take that microphone with you, Mr. Bay.
The bike paths, I don't recall, six, eight, ten feet?
It hasn't been submitted yet, only in concept, again, that's part of the next redraft, it will have it. If you remember at several meetings ago, there was a concept plan showing it, I think it was eight to ten feet wide, um, but we haven't submitted it in an engineered form yet.
So in the back of your mind, you could add whatever that will be, plus the fifteen-foot widening, plus the seventy-five-foot berm. Keep in mind that the four condos here may be impaired by the expansion of those two things, and the four condos may not have space anymore.
Okay, the engineer is listening.
The multiple together, and I guess she won't know until you do a final. The gentleman over there lived in contiguous property. The town is allowed to request an above-ground berm. They can ask for above-ground berm, so you look out of your backyard.
Mr. Bay, is this a?
Um, did you have considerations for an above-ground berm when you put these together?
That's a site feature, that's with the civil engineer.
Very good, and on the north side also, that's, I guess, also a site feature. If they put a berm there, that would potentially eliminate the, uh, hotel from being there, if the, thank you, but that wasn't part of your consideration?
No, that, that's a civil engineering.
Okay, because the hotel would be on the seventy-five-foot berm up there, thank you.
You're so quick at getting the comments in, Mr. Bay, I don't even have an opportunity to object. Sneaks them right in.
Okay, so I appreciate it, the berms were a consideration, and thank you.
Thank you, any other comments from the audience, questions, sorry?
Wow, we finished right on time.
Wow, great.
No more questions?
So the board understands, uh, until we submit the revised engineering drawings, that concludes our presentation, subject obviously to our ability to recall witnesses, should the, uh, the neighbors present any witnesses that we feel is necessary to add supplemental testimony. So I would anticipate at the next meeting that whichever of the neighbors is hiring a traffic expert, that they are expected that they will be there at that meeting, because the following meeting will be for the presentation of revised plans, and then we intend to rest our case subject to the public comment.
That's understood, uh, I hope the general public heard, and, um.
And so this meeting will be next week on the twenty-fourth, without further notice?
That's correct.
And it's at seven-thirty, because it's a regular meeting?
That's correct. So Jackie, you have your expert here, next week, correct? I, I want, I want you to have your opportunity, so please, have them here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, board members.
The date for, what do you mean, commentary at the end? I can't tell you that date, because Ms. Crimco is going, after the, uh, traffic expert of the opponents is presented, and then you can, uh, question that person as well, then Ms. Crimco's going to come back and, uh, talk about some more, um, like the tree experts report, or maybe something else.
I indicated that we're not reintroducing the tree expert, but what we will do is have the site engineer go over the changes that were made to the engineered plans, address any comments that might be in Bill or Jim's letter to the board's satisfaction, and then conclude our case, and then at that point, depending how many questions the public asks that witness, would be when we would anticipate to open it to the public.
So Scott, we can't really put a time on it, but she's giving you sort of a chronology of when you can expect that to happen. Could be, or, well, not, not the next meeting, your, the next meeting would be your, your person.
It will not, I, it will not be at the next meeting for public comment, because we will not have submitted our, first of all, because we're limited to the, to the hour, number one, but number two, we will not have submitted our engineer drawings. So again, the public comment doesn't occur until we've concluded.
Right, so would you agree, Jennifer, that the first possible moment for that would be sometime in July?
Correct.
Just, uh, just on, just on a finer point, would we have a, um, would, uh, would, um, a review of the site plan and all that kind of stuff then shift into public comment? Or would we, would we have a break and say that we'd have another?
Depending on.
On the time.
It depends on the time, I mean, if, my, my anticipation is, is that if it's at a special hearing, and, and I understand that we may be accommodated with a special hearing in July, if it's at a special hearing, I expect I'll conclude my affirmative testimony. I expect that the public will, the public will have asked questions, and then when I'm finished, I would expect that we would go right into the public question.
Go right into the public comments.
Comment, I mean, I'm sorry.
Public comments.
If we're paying for a special, we would expect to have the full time.
Okay, is that understood, Dennis, you have something?
Yes, I just want to be crystal clear, the urban jug handle is the plan. The old jug handle is.
The urban jug, I, I can represent to you that our engineers are putting the final touches on the fully engineered plan, which is the urban jug handle.
Thank you, cool.
Might need the microphone. I'll give you five dollars.
I love this guy.
Okay, so, um, if we come here the next time, then, for, um, you're saying we, we're not gonna wrap it up on that time? If we have the traffic expert here, that won't, will that end for that?
That, the, the traffic expert will end that night.
Okay.
I'm not presenting any additional witnesses unless I bring my, unless my traffic, I'm gonna be cross-exam- you're gonna put your traffic expert up, we will cross-examine the traffic expert. If your traffic expert has said something that I feel it's necessary for our traffic expert to counter or offer additional testimony for clarification, I'll put my traffic expert up. But we're not intending to introduce any additional plans at the next meeting.
Okay, but when I asked about the parking lot, and you said that's the engineer, like, questions like that, does it need so much parking lot, that's not gonna, we don't get to ask that question now, because he, he came earlier?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I recall, I recall, but as we've been watching this thing evolve, it's.
The engineer will be put up to discuss the changes to the plan only. It's not going to be free season to start at the beginning and start asking every single question from the beginning.
Okay.
It'll be limited to what the new testimony, because we closed the public portion as to generally.
Okay.
Well, we didn't, the board did.
I, I really, my, my point to come up here really was to ask, um, Mr. Varelli a question, and then Dennis throw me off there. So, um, what I did want to ask you, is it possible, because a lot of the people in town are not online, they're not as tuned into it, yet I run into them all the time, it certainly came up a lot during the campaign. They don't know when things are happening, they don't get things in the mail. Could we, could I, would this be something the planning board would do, is it something the council should do? Can we send every single resident in the town a letter? Because it's a great deal of money for us to do it on our own, as neighbors, trying to get people out. But people have, it's a very big project, as you all acknowledge, it is.
Meetings are listed in the paper, and they're put online, and the, it, it's available to everyone in the township. They know when the meetings are, and they can.
They, they don't really, not in terms of these meetings, they're a little.
I would fervently object if the town were going to choose this one project of any project to send notices to every resident in the town. I sent the notices to everyone within two hundred feet. If you wanna undertake an email campaign or a letter-writing campaign, you're free to do that. It would be entirely inappropriate, and the town is not authorized to do that.
But what projects have we had on this scale?
You would agree, I'm, I'm extending great courtesy for even having this soliloquy.
For one, Seaview Square.
Maybe that was years ago.
It doesn't matter whether it's years ago, that's been the policy of the.
More space then.
It's the state law, and it's never been the policy of the township to send letters out on applications. It, it prejudices the application.
No, we just, when it comes time for public comment, I think it would be important that the public know.
I have to object, I, I was extending a courtesy, because I thought it was a procedural question with regard to our traffic expert.
I understand.
This is inappropriate, long questioning.
Why is it inappropriate for the township, for people that are not on Facebook?
Your, I object.
Jackie, you're arguing again.
It's not a question for the expert, that's what we're here for.
I asked, I really wanted it for Mr. Varelli.
And we're administrative board, we don't have the ability to make decisions to send out notifications, nor do we have a budget to do that, I don't.
So that would be, again, a question for the council, is that what you're saying?
I don't know who you go to, but, you know, we're all volunteers up here, how are we gonna pay for that for you, Jackie? I, I don't understand that.
That's not for me, I mean, stop saying that, it's not for me, it's, I'm telling you, when I was campaigning, a lot of people don't know what's.
She is not able to make representations without what people told her.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting.
A second. Okay.
Roll call that meeting.
Yes, can't leave yet. I made the motion.
I saw it on television.
Yes.
Yes, yes. Yes. Uh, yes.